Next week, we give it a big push and try to get the great first mic.
Thank you.
Hopefully that'll be it.
Host isn't there yet, so.
Thank you. So I'll just carry the room.
Yeah. All right. Well, we've got our council here and we've got members of the public. Let's convene our public hearing. It is about not quite 6:05 on Tuesday, January 12th. And we're holding the public hearing for the City Council of Woodland Hills. The first item that we will hear from the public on is a request for rezone from R2 to R1 for 185 West Lakeview Way. In accordance with previous rules, we give anybody that would like to comment two minutes to comment and to make their comments to the city council. And Jody will go through and give everybody that is on the chance to comment.
And Mayor, we're just doing it on the first item this time, right? And then we'll go on to the next one.
Yes, this one is for the rezone for 195 West Lakeview Way.
Oh, I would ask that if anyone wants to comment, they raise your hand on the first item on the public hearing.
Does everybody know how to do that? Will you explain to people so that...
Oh, sure. So if you're wanting to raise your hand, if you... Oh, I should know where that is.
It's under Participants.
There you go. Thank you.
You have to have the participants list and then you just... You can raise your hand on your own name.
It's actually the bottom. It's not next to your name. It's at the bottom on the right-hand side.
So you'll see mine going over my screen right here as I go to the bottom of the right-hand corner of my...
I don't see it. So I don't know what's wrong with me.
So you push, push Participants, that, that part in the middle next to video?
Right.
Little screen will pop up on your right-hand side and it shows everybody who's on the meeting. And at the bottom right-hand side, it says Raise Hand and you push, click that.
Yeah, I'm not showing that.
This is on item one. I've got Sharon Wright and David Stones with their hands up. Sharon, would you like to go first?
Sharon, you're muted. There you go.
There you go.
I don't really have a comment. I'm just curious about where that property is, just so that I can know what we're talking about.
It's, it's Dave and Jody Stone's property.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Dave, do you have a question?
No, I was just, I was just raising my hand so people would see that it was raised and I was gonna make some comment on how to do it, but I already figured it out, so I'll go ahead and lower it. And I've got no comment outside of I'm in favor of it.
That seems good.
Okay, Mayor, I haven't seen anyone else.
I haven't either. Do... But you know what, honestly?
Would you like me to go through everyone's names?
Well, I just can't... I mean, like, I'm looking and I can see that, like, Sharon's hand is raising.
Yeah, Sharon's got her hand up.
But I can't see how to do it on my computer. And if somebody else is having the same problem...
I'm happy to go through each name.
Yeah, let's just, let's just whip through and make sure that we don't miss somebody that's, that wants...
Okay, Sharon, would you like to go first?
Um, I, my curi-, I'm curious. And I'm, this is not pro or con, but the reason you want to rezone from R2 to R1 is so that you could sell one of your lots or subdivide, is that, is that the reason why this is necessary?
Yes, to subdivide.
Okay.
If you want to subdivide.
All righty, thanks.
All right, I've got Tiffany Tuler, who has her hand up.
Yes, hello. Actually, Todd here, Mayor, in answer to your question on how to raise a hand, we're on a phone. And so we actually do not go into the Participants button. If we hit the, at the bottom of the screen, the main screen, if you hit More on the right of Participants, then it has a thing that says Raise Hand, Lower Hand.
Oh, and you know what? I'm looking at the bottom of my screen and instead of Participants, it says Reactions.
Oh, okay, so it looks like we have different versions.
So, okay, if, if you're, thank you. Thanks, Todd. And anybody else is looking, you just have to keep, yeah, it might be more, it might be Participants, it might be under Reactions. Okay. Finally found it. All right. Go ahead, Jody.
Okay, so we'll go just row by row. And we'll start with Dave and Wendy Taylor. Do you have any comments on item one? Hey, Greg Witt, do you have any comments? Wayne Franson, any comments on item one?
No.
Ben Brynlee, do you have any comments on item one?
Uh, no, thanks.
Jeff Berger, do you have any comments on item one?
No, thanks, Jody.
Severin Johnson, do you have any comments on item one? Okay. John Wallace, do you have any comments on item one?
Nope.
Thank you. Bish Christiansen, do you have any comments on item one?
No, thank you.
Lori Thomas, do you have any comments on public comment item number one? Maybe I'll just go on to Steve Westfall. Do you have any comments on public hearing item number one?
No, I don't.
Thank you. The Probst Party, do you have any comments on item number one? Ed Mickelson, do you have any comments on item number one?
I do not. No, then.
Megan Fugia, do you have any comments on item number one?
No.
And then I just have a phone number for the next person. Do you have any comments on item number one?
No.
Okay. So that is all of them, Mayor. I believe I've gotten them all for item number one on the public hearing.
Great, all right. We're moving on to item number two, which is the proposed city code Title 10. Dave, would you like to just give a very, very brief explanation of what we're hearing for tonight? Or Wayne, either one of you?
Uh, sure. Sorry, I was just in the middle of trying to switch to my laptop so I keep notes on my iPad, but I'll stay on the iPad for now. So Title 10. This is one of the titles as part of our codification. And it's one that deals primarily, if I remember correctly, with building ordinances. Is that correct, Wayne?
It's zoning, including zoning. Yeah.
Okay, so Title 10 has to do with the zoning. This one had, has been available for the public since the beginning of October. We spent a lot of time with this one because out of all of the titles that had some changes, adjustments, whatever you want to call it, made to them, Titles 10 and 11 were, were the, the biggest. And part of that was because there was just an awful lot of cleanup and then there was some things that LEI had suggested. There have also been changes to state code, which needed to be addressed. Some of those changes, we wanted to make sure that they reflected either our current ordinances or went through state code. And so we spent a lot of time going through both Titles 10 and 11, making sure that we could account for each of the changes. I'm gonna say we were able to account for most of them. I'm not gonna say that we were able to account for all of them. I'm not gonna say that we were able to account for all of them because some of the changes are more along the lines of procedural changes, structure changes. Although the procedural changes that were introduced, a lot of those we have now taken out of Title 10 until we can pass those as standalone ordinances. So at this point, we wanted to make sure that we gave the public plenty of time for comment on both Titles 10 and 11. So that's why we did not... We posted them at the beginning of October. We've had them available since then unchanged. In addition, we had some... A commentary, I'm gonna call it that, from Mike Lordson, who is one of the members of the group that kind of went through it, and then a response from our Planning Commission Chair, Wayne Franson, who kind of responded to that. And that has also been available since October on the city website. So at this point, that's where Titles 10 and 11 are. We're not considering Title 11 tonight to do that. The Planning Commission has to consider that one first. So this is just for Title 10. Wayne, if you wanted to add anything?
I think you covered it pretty well, David.
All right, let's hear comment, Jody.
Megan, I am gonna start on the top right-hand corner. And I have got Megan.
So is it... Am I the first person?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I just wanted to say, first off, I know that you've taken some of the changes out. There are still quite a few, and a few that concern me. I'm concerned that the city building official is still being given the ability to grant variances and waive any requirement of the site plan checklist in the building permit packet. I think this is a bad idea. Variances should always go through the Appeal Board as specified in the state laws. And no one individual should be able to waive any requirement without any oversight or even having to state a reason. This makes it really easy to simply waive a requirement if something is done incorrectly or left out, whether on accident or on purpose. It's too much power for one person. And the purpose, which has previously been given for this change, can be easily accomplished by rather just putting a right option for the items that require it. I'm also concerned many responsibilities are being given to us, in quotes, "city-approved official." How will this official be approved? In what ways will this happen to ensure that the individual is actually authorized with sufficient authority and training before acting in the specified capacity? I'm concerned about the accessory building ordinance. I don't believe it was properly passed, and it's very flawed. For instance, as currently written, a resident could build an accessory building up on stilts, like a treehouse. And as long as it's not taller than 17 feet between the floor and any portion of the roof, it complies. I don't think that this is a good idea for our city. I think if submitted, a site plan with this type of structure proposed could not legally be denied. And this should really be looked at. And it would make sense to tie all building height to the lowest natural point where the building is being constructed according to our current building height definition. David Pratt also said that any law that had not been properly passed should now be passed properly with sufficient public notice stating what changes are being contemplated. I think we need to revisit that accessory building ordinance as a city separately since it's such a significant departure from the previous ordinance, and it never had a public hearing. I'm concerned that we took out the idea of the Board of Adjustments...
Megan, you're almost out of time. You have about 15 seconds.
...of the keeping of animals. And those are just a few of the changes that concern me.
Hey, thank you. Jody?
I have Sharon Wright. Sharon, you're not unmuted yet.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm showing my face now since I'm through eating dinner. I am just concerned, I know that technically there have been two public hearings through the Planning Commission. But I am concerned that the public is not aware of some of the ramifications that could be a result of okaying this. And I know that, having been on the... Not the committee, but the group that has been studying the codification, we debated and discussed a whole lot of things. And there's so much in Title 10 that really should be discussed by the town, but people do not know even what the issues are. I've spoken to our mayor, Wendy, and she said that she and I could answer a lot of questions together and write a letter to the town. I would still very much like to do that so that we can talk about some of the pros and cons of some of the questions that people have, then give people a real, true chance to discuss this. Because I just do not think that real discussion has occurred about Title 10. And some of these things that Megan has discussed and a few other things are of concern that will affect our town in a big way. And I think that even though technically there have been two public hearings by the Planning Commission, they were poorly attended because people did not know what the issues were. And so I think that a letter that Wendy and I could draft together to discuss some of the answers and pros and cons of the questions prior to publicizing it would be a really, really good way to show that our city really, truly would like some discussion on this before they just pass it. So those are my thoughts.
Sorry, thank you, Sharon. Jody?
The next person I have is the Probst Party.
Yes, this is Cannon Fugio. Let's see if we can cut the... Here. Okay, can you hear me now? I think it's valuable for us to take a moment and step back, perhaps, from the emotion and the charged nature of the subject at hand. And I know that some people, like Severn, are sitting back and rolling their eyes, but that's okay. Because I think in reality, if we aren't careful about examining history and what's happened in the past, that we'll be doomed to repeat it. And in the past, the citizens weren't aware of what was passed, what this law contained. And when they started to find out about it, became concerned. And there was obviously enough groundswell to cause a referendum. And I've heard council members indicate that passing the previous version of this was the worst decision they've made on the city council. I don't want that to happen again. I don't want that to happen to our city. Instead, I would like robust discussion, honest, a high-integrity review of what the meaning is, how it can be interpreted. I am very concerned about the amount of power held by one individual to make capricious and arbitrary decisions with very little oversight from those who not only have the technical qualifications to review this, but also have the interest of this city and its longevity and what the impact of those immediate decisions will be. So I would simply encourage the city council to take a step back, engage the city, ask for what our suggestions are, because these are easy fixes. These are really easy fixes to the laws. And we'd be happy to suggest ways that they can be changed so that they can appropriately be passed, and we won't have the loopholes. We want to be protected in the city. And the best way to do that is engage lots of minds who can look at it from lots of different directions to be able to approach this critically and thoughtfully, rather than hurriedly. Because when we're in a hurry, oftentimes we have... There's a law of unintended consequences, and we simply just don't want that for our city. And that's really all I have to say tonight.
Okay, I have Wendy Taylor.
Okay, Wendy, go ahead.
Wendy, we just need you to unmute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just briefly, I am a little concerned about not allowing some flexibility in the law. Allowing an individual some latitude to interpret cuts a lot of unnecessary bureaucracy that is going to come down like a hammer on people that are just trying to build a treehouse. And who cares if they want to build a little treehouse? It's kind of fun on their lot. We shouldn't be regulating every single possible possibility of this. But yeah, we probably ought to consider which pieces can be done and which pieces cannot be done or undone by a single person. That's all.
Thank you, Dave. Jody?
Next person is Severn Johnson.
Just one comment, and that is that I think over the past few months, the citizen group that has been reviewing Titles 10 and 11 have done a magnificent job. It has not been rushed. It has been done very professionally, very cautiously. And we've had very open discussions about most of the things that seem to be considered negative tonight. And I just think we need to commend that citizens group for the wonderful work that they did. Thanks.
Thank you, Severn. Jody?
Our next person we have is... Actually, we don't have anyone else who's commenting on this.
Okay. Right, well, I really appreciate everybody's...
Excuse me, I'm sorry if I wasn't on the list. Can I make a comment? This is Marlene Lartson.
Absolutely, Marlene. You have two minutes. Go ahead. We'd love to hear it.
Thank you. My husband and I were on the committee, and he did most of the review of the two titles. My concern about what happened with the committee is that we asked the city to send the line... My husband went through line by line and compared the old with the new. And he made a very specific... He wasn't judging anything. He was just making the outline of where the changes were. And I'm pretty sure that went to the city council. But our really preferred goal of the whole committee was that that information would have been given to the city. And we asked that that information be given to the city. And it could have easily been given in an email, just like, you know, the Santa Claus, Christmas information. It could have easily been sent to the city, and I wished it would have. And then people would know what every little change was. There would be no problem or misunderstanding. It was done line by line, and he did an excellent job. And I'm speaking for me, not for him. But my dissatisfaction with all the efforts of the committee was that it was not presented to the city. We were told that it was on the website, but the city didn't tell anybody that it was on the website for their review. And that's... That I appreciated the opportunity to be able to serve on the committee. I was there mostly as a supporter, but I was a little dissatisfied that it was not given to the citizens. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So that it wasn't publicized more, where the information was available?
Yes. Yes.
I think Severn still has his... Severn, do you still want to make a comment? Or is your... Nope, you're good. Okay. Sheri Berger?
Yeah, what we're seeing on the website, on the city's website, under Titles 10, 11, and 12, where it's in red, is that what the committee put together? Or who is it that inserted the red comments and crossed things out? How did we get to where we are now, what's on the website?
If I can answer that, the committee only gave the information to David Pratt. He was the chair of the committee. And so the committee didn't make any decisions, didn't give opinions. It was to go to the city council. So that was all that the committee did, was provide the comparison of the old and the new.
So then your information that you gave to David, I guess for the city... The question that I then have for the city council is, was this discussed amongst the city council members and the mayor? Or did David just insert the red that we see on the website?
No, I most definitely did not insert the red alone, I should say it that way. It really... I want to be clear on a couple of things. One, the goal of the committee was not to create new laws. It was to get our Titles 10 and 11 as close to our current ordinances as we possibly could. Given the fact that the state has made some changes, LEI was recommending some changes. I mean, there were just... There were a lot of factors that played in with these two titles. But what our goal was, was to get it as close to our current ordinances as possible. I will readily admit, we have a lot of work yet to do. Because as has been explained, there are still some pieces of Titles 10 and 11 that aren't as clear as they could be, aren't as well-written as they could be, and we have some missing pieces as well. But we didn't want to mix new law with codification. We wanted to try and separate them into two separate activities. So the goal of our current endeavor is to just pass the Titles 10 and 11 codified. And then we will take upon ourselves the work to kind of go through those and fix some of the things that we saw and were highlighted. And again, Mike highlighted a fair number of those. The Fuges have mentioned a few of them. And I personally, I'm speaking now for myself, I agree that we need to fix some things in there and definitely plan on doing that. But I just want to do it as a second step, not as the first step, because it just got way too ugly to try and do it all in one step.
So the part that Sheri's referring to that's on the website with the red comments, is that what you received from Mike Lordson?
Partially. So yes, that was what I received from Mike Lordson. And then Wayne made some comments in there as well. So you'll see both Mike's comments, and then you'll see Wayne's comments about each one of those.
Dave, I have a quick question, though. The things that I have referenced, other than the accessory building ordinance, which I believe was not given any public notice or public hearings, all of the other changes or actual changes that were introduced as compared to our original ordinances before, they're not things that were original to the ordinances prior?
I'm not exactly sure what you're saying.
Let me try and explain it better. They are changes that were made to our ordinances as part of codification, but they're not original to the ordinances that were posted on the website prior to codification.
Okay, let me see if I can give an example. A good example is all of our zoning... Not all of them, but most of our zoning titles changed. So they changed to be more conformant with the way that other cities are naming their zones. You would be correct if you were saying that that was not done as part of a previous ordinance. That was done as part of codification. But as we went through it, we looked at that and viewed that as less of a... I mean, it was just renaming something. It was... It used to be this, now it's... I mean, it was just renaming something. It was, it used to be this, now it's this, kind of a change.
Those were none of the, the concerns that I had, however. The concerns I had were with being able to waive site plan requirements, any site plan requirement, and with the ability to grant variances, which prior had not been granted to any individual, only to the appeal board.
Yeah, I'd be happy to go through those individually with you.
That would be great.
And make sure that it, it fits with, again, as we went through them, we, we found the, we called it the backing document. So the original ordinance where those changes existed on almost every change that we had identified. If we missed one, I'm more than happy to address it. A, a good example, though, is actually the accessory building ordinance, which I don't disagree that we could make some fixes to it. But that in fact did have a public hearing, and it did in fact pass. And we have the backing document for that ordinance.
Could you show me the public hearing notice? I have been unable to find it on any of our public notice websites or in any of the emails the city had sent.
Um, yeah, I'd be happy to attempt to do that. But I will, I will admit, the public notice websites are kind of a mess. And our city website needs a lot of work as well. And honestly, I've been spending hours trying to get it better so that it's a little more clear. But right now, the only site that we have to put public notice on is the state website. And I quite frankly, find that a disaster. It's really hard to find information on it.
I, I could find the accessory building or accessory apartment public notice, but I could not find any for the accessory building.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you. Is there anybody else that, Jody, that had their hand raised that did not get to comment yet?
I am looking right now.
I think I can raise my hand again, and the only question...
Yes, so we've got Sharon, who's got her hand raised again, and Sherry Berger. So we'll, we'll start with Sherry, and then we'll go on to Sharon.
Okay, thanks. The, the question that I have is who, who would I go to in the city when I have questions for what I'm reading in these changes for codification? I mean, is, is this the venue that we do this in, in, you know, these public meetings? Or, you know, David, can I call you and ask for a definition on what a private road is? When we say, when we get into Title 11, that there are no private roads in Woodland Hills? I don't know what that means. Who, who could I contact, or who should I contact to ask individual questions to?
I'd certainly be happy to answer any of your questions. I know anyone on the planning commission would be willing to answer those questions as well. And Ben Corbett is a good resource as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Jody?
And then we have Sharon, who's the next one.
Um, I think it would be really helpful to be able to examine some, some of these things that really are questions. Not to, not to be contentious in any way, but to just say, this is the, these are the pros and cons of some of these things. These are some of the changes that have been made. Most of them are, like Dave said, they're just housekeeping to make sure that things are, are uniformalized. And I agree with that. But there are some real true issues that need to be discussed with pros and cons discussed. And again, that is why I really feel strongly that we need to educate. I think Sherry is really smart in saying, how do I get answers? But I think she's a, a real exception to the rule. Most people don't even know that they have questions. And so I think to, to try to send out a letter where all these things, pros and cons, can be discussed, I still think would be a really good thing before we have any vote.
Okay, Jody, are we ready to move on?
We are ready to move on.
Okay. Thank you so much for all of you that have, that have given us comments. It's very helpful. The council is really trying to be responsive on these issues. Some of this mess is exactly why we're trying to get this codified, so that we won't have this moving forward. And that things will be much more clear-cut and understandable, easy to identify, easy for people to find. It's one of the reasons we want to get this done, so that we can, if this, we won't have this in the future. It's a mess that has come to us, not through anybody's bad behavior in the past. It's just part of growing up organically from a little town to a bigger city. It's just part of the organic growth that has happened. And I am, I, I fear that in some ways, we have sounded like we were criticizing people that have come before us for leaving us a mess. And I don't feel that way at all. I just feel like, you know, the linen closet has gotten out of control, and it's time for us to bring it back into control. And so anyway, thank you for your comments. Very helpful. We're going to move on to the last topic on our, for our public hearing, and that is the creation of a new city zone, public facilities with a mitigation overlay zone. The overlay zone would include a restriction of no trespassing. This zone would be applied to lots number 34, 36, 43, and 47 in Platt B of Thousand Oaks. And those are the lots that the city purchased for the mud flow mitigation efforts following the fire that we had. So there, we're trying to create a new zone because they're not residential. But we don't intend for them to be recreation facilities or public facilities in the sense that they are there for the, for citizens just to use. They're there for the mitigation facilities that are there. So, Jody, would you like to give anybody that wants a chance to comment on this, a chance to give comment?
Yes, I think on this, we'll just, if everyone, has everyone figured out the raising of hands? And I'll start with that, and then I'll kind of open it up. So let's start with Greg Witt. Greg, you need to unmute yourself, please. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor. I think we need, we need more public spaces now, more than ever. And people need places to be alone, to just watch a sunset, or enjoy the outdoors, to walk their dog. And far better that happens in a, in a natural area than on city streets or in the park. We need, we need more public spaces to off the street where people can, can easily walk and enjoy the outdoors. Over the last two months, I've talked with every single resident surrounding the park and surrounding the mitigation lots. And not one of them said, we need more no trespassing zones. And, or I want to see more of those beautiful black, black and red signs. But, but my, my main reason is that in, in designating these areas as mitigate, these mitigation lots as no trespassing zones, it severely limits our, our, our funding, our, our funding sources for remediation. And as soon as the city designates these mitigation lots as no trespassing zones, they're cut off from our main source of grant funding. The, the Utah Outdoor Recreation Grants specifically state, quote, that the projects must be open for public use. And, and also, our nonprofit organization, Woodland Hills Outdoors, we're currently raising funds to install a split rail fence, to do some remediation, landscaping, planting of trees around the mitigation lots. And why should Woodland Hills Outdoors, or why should any resident of Woodland Hills contribute money to, to build this fence or to plant trees if, if it's going to be, provide no public enjoyment or any benefit to the community? Also, the mitigation project didn't happen just with federal funds falling out of the sky. Much of it was a result of the generous sacrifice of, of men donated labor, hundreds of hours from, from our residents. And, and they, they were led to believe that, that some greater good or public benefit would be derived coming out of their sacrifice. So for the city to make these lots a no trespassing zone, I think it's a slap in the face to those residents.
Okay, Greg, sorry. We've got time.
Okay.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I, I have...
Just wind it up. Take about 15 seconds.
Okay. I think we have better alternatives. Rather than creating a no trespassing zone, why not look at some zoning overlays to other cities' views? Like a natural resources zone, or a nature reserve, or wildlife habitat, or environmental zone, or scenic resource? So those are all more positive than calling it, or making a special overlay just as a no trespassing zone.
Thank you. Okay. Jody?
Let's start with John Wallace.
I have a question for Ted first, and then my comment, is that okay? Ted, you there?
Yep, I'm here, John.
What is your understanding with the engineering firm on these mitigation projects? Of what the powers that be would allow to occur on this? My understanding is they don't really want much going on on these four lots. But can you clarify that first, and then I'll make my comment?
Yeah, so generally, so these were funded by two different federal agencies. And in general, what they say is that the the mitigation improvements can be altered or modified for a certain period of time. So I guess, I mean, essentially, they are city facilities, and the city is now deemed responsible to operate and maintain them. And whatever the decisions are made, just can't alter or affect the intent of the mitigation project. And I guess that's probably the best way to put it. You know, people to understand it, so.
Okay, John?
Okay. Those of us that live up here do not want public access. I'll just be blunt on that. Our concern is maintaining the original intent of these properties, which was residential. The use has changed, but I feel like the impact can be somewhat taken back to what that residential zoning is. The impact of what those would have been with four homes is what us as neighbors are obviously okay with. But we don't want recreational facilities. We don't want city building buildings. We don't want storage facilities. We don't want pipes. We don't want stuff stored up here. We don't want residents or non-residents coming up here and hiking and going on a, a sightseeing trip up here. We just don't want the impact up here. We're, we're up here at the end, and we're kind of here because it is kind of quiet. Well, it was. It is quiet, and we'd like to maintain that as much as we can. My concern of the no trespassing zone are two things. First of all, is that I, I think it's open-ended, but maybe it meets the intent. I don't know. I'm not an attorney. I'm not a zoning expert. And how much of that no trespassing is going to apply to the city? I, I know there's going to be ongoing maintenance, and obviously you have to trespass to maintain that. There's some logic there. But does that maintenance, you know, rise to the occasion of, well, we're going to build a building here to store what we need to in order to maintain these projects and things of that nature? So my concern, regardless of what you do at the zoning, is if the verbiage is sufficient enough for the intent of what it's trying to accomplish in prohibiting additional things being added to these properties beyond where they're at now, with the exception. And I understand Greg's frustration, because I can see where funding will be limited. If we say, hey, nobody can use it, but we just want to plant a bunch of trees and try and get it back to the way it was. I understand that concept. But by the same token, those of us that live here, we don't want people coming up here and using them and trails.
Hey, John, you're 15 seconds. Okay. Thanks.
I've sent my letter. You guys know what I feel, so.
And John, I will include that with the minutes. Next would be Erin Low.
All right. Dare I say, knowing that the sheriff is also on the agenda, that I have violated the no trespassing and taken my kids sledding in the pit. But I will also say that in doing that, while I was looking forward to having the opportunity to recreate in that nice open space, I also recognize the risks of letting people be in that space, because although it looks like it's a nice, smooth pit and is a great place for sledding, we found that actually it's kind of dangerous. And so we've decided we're not going to be sledding there anymore. So I recognize that the city needs to do some things to mitigate risk of having people use that publicly. If we are going to use it publicly, such as a trailhead to access the switchbacks, if we wanted to do it differently, or just simply to walk around, because it's a nice, quiet place to walk around, there needs to be a way to make it safe and also prohibit people from doing things that might get themselves injured and then come back and risk a lawsuit against the city. So that would be my comment.
Thank you, Erin. Jody?
Um, I'm just looking really quick. Sherry, did you have a comment?
Sorry, Sherry. My, my comment is, I guess I think it would be a good idea to postpone. And I know there's another public hearing to come after this one on this re-zoning. And my comment is, if the city would consider all the projects that are going on and have the potential to happen in the city. And I'm specifically talking now about the avalanche pit and what's going to go on, or could go on up there by the water tanks, how there would be trail access. If there is no trail access up there because of the berms and perhaps a wall of dirt across the easement behind Taylors and Toolers, how are citizens going to access the trail? Would they have to go through the mitigation lot, or could they come up from, is it Skylake or Skyview from that way? I think it would be a good idea if we looked at everything as a whole, rather than taking it piecemeal, one piece at a time.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry. Jody?
Looking, and I'm not seeing anyone else with their hand raised. I would like to go through each person and just quickly make sure that we've gotten everyone now, because I don't want there to be any questions.
I, I think Nanette Baker's got her hand raised.
Okay, I didn't see her. She must have, oh, there she is, Nanette.
I'm probably at the very bottom. So obviously, we live right next to two of these mitigation lots. Um, I noticed that you have put up the no trespassing sign. We were out for a walk just yesterday. There's people going through it. You can see the tracks. So I, we need to be careful with that and the funding that's been given to us to protect those. Hopefully, we don't have any damage. It is concerning about the future. I'm not talking about a couple years from now. I'm talking about five years from now. I'm talking about 10 years from now, about what is put in place today, or next week, or next month, how it's going to affect in the future, and especially us residents in that long period of time. So that's what I have to say about it.
Thank you, Nanette. Right?
Um, I see Greg Witt with his hand up. Nope, he said he's good. Okay. Mayor, would you like to have me go through everyone, just to make sure?
I think everybody at this point knows what to do to be heard. So I think we can consider that we've heard from everybody that wants to speak. If there's somebody that hasn't had a chance, try and get in touch with Jody, and we'll hear from you. But we're going to move on.
Tori Isit.
Oh, okay, Tori.
Oh. Sorry, I think some people are having trouble with their hand thing, and I just dropped Trump, so I hope this doesn't cut out. I'm trying to talk, I was hoping I could make it back home, but so I seen it out, because I
Tori, I'm not sure why, but you're sounding like a robot to us. We're having a hard time understanding what you're saying.
Because I'm driving, can you hear me?
A little.
Are you able to hear me?
We are now.
Okay, so I almost, okay, I'm driving back home, I had to drop Trinity off at Young Women, so and hopefully this doesn't cut out too much, but my, so I've had a lot of issues because we were very impacted by this whole mitigation pond thing. With all the vibration and loud machinery and stuff right outside our house. So my issue is, and I'm not a Grinch or anything, like, I am not, I did not move next to a trailhead. I did not move next to a park, I moved next to a lot that one side or by, or there would be a home there that would just like 20 feet. It's not what we got, and the way different what I had envisioned when we were first told about it. And I frustration when we were dealing with the vibrations and everything from the compaction and stuff. But I've still kind of rolled with it. We've got this giant berm outside of our bedroom window now that had a house been put there, would not be there. It is literally a foot away from our property line. And I'm not a Grinch about people coming up, like, I want it to be beautiful, I want to put trees there. I plan on paying money to put trees between our house and that berm. Like, I'm going to be out of pocket money because of this monstrosity that's been built next to our house. So I'm not a Grinch about people going in it, but what's happening?
Tori, you cut out on us.
I don't think it would be fair to then and subject me to that after we've already bought and built. Now, there is a mitigation pond, it is the perfect sledding hill, I get it, there's been kids going in it, I'm totally fine with it, because it's a couple of kids here and there. But the problem is, and what people who don't live directly next to it understand, is that when they walk up it, they're right outside my window. Like, they're, they're not 40 feet away from my, like, they are right outside my window, walking on the edge of the berm. Well, my dogs start going crazy, so if there's people constantly walking up and down the side of this, this berm, and my, I gotta listen to my dogs all day. Like, that's not what I signed up for, I signed up for there to either be an empty lot that I could purchase or a house. And okay, so when anybody ever walks on there, they're got a direct line into my house. So I'm not trying to be this Grinch that doesn't want anybody up there, but I didn't move up here to have a bunch of foot traffic next to my house.
Okay, thank you. All right. Jody?
I'm not seeing anyone else.
Okay. Thank you all for being here and participating with us in this hearing tonight. Three important things to consider, and we appreciate all your input, you're great citizens, we love serving you all. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will open our work session for our city council, it's about 7:00 PM on January 12th. You know what, I have it 6:57, let me give everybody five minutes. And we'll, we'll resume about 7:02. So people can take a break if they need to, and then we'll resume our, we'll take our work session at 7:02. Moving on, number two, discussion of the Title 10 part of the code. So we heard some good comments tonight, what would you guys like to? Any questions or concerns or discussions you want to have about it?
I was just wondering, we had the discussion, and we're having this discussion, but it's not necessarily an action item for voting on in the city council. So is there another step that we're waiting for in between? I guess I'm asking David that.
Well, I, I did not put it on as an action item, because I wanted to make sure that the citizens that are really worried that we're trying to push too quickly, know that we were going to hear from this public hearing tonight, and that we were going to take at least another two weeks before action was taken. So we can put it on the next agenda if we want to do that. But this way, the citizens know that we're not just head and pell mell into decision.
Okay, so.
Not that we would have been anyway, but.
Right, so, so David, what do you envision us doing between now and the next two weeks? Be pondering what the citizens said, I mean, we've already read what you've given us. What else do, would you like us to do? Do we need to have an additional work session where this is all we talk about? Or are we hashing it out tonight so that we can then ponder it during the next two weeks? What, what is your intent for us?
Look. This has been a long, 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 long process. I liked Marlene's suggestion that we send out an email that includes a link to those things and basically encourage people to talk to their city council person if they have any concerns. I, I like that, I mean, the more public input we can get, the better, I'm never against that. I will say that I feel like, you know, we've done what I feel is the best job that anyone could do to bring this into compliance with our current ordinances. Is it perfect? No, and no document ever will be perfect, I mean, that's just the reality. We're always open for input, and I'll also say that I don't think this is the end of the discussion in these areas. I, I think that there are some valid points and valid things that need to be cleaned up, and that'll be the case 10 years from now, too. So I, I say we just continue receiving input until we take a vote. If there's a big issue that comes up, I, I'm game to address it. But I also do feel like at some point, we, we have to take a vote, because that's, I mean, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be doing the business of the city if we didn't eventually pass this. So whether it's this month, next month, April, May, June, I mean, we've been at it now since April of last year. And this has been on our agenda pretty much every city council meeting, so yeah, at some point, we need to do the business of the people.
Well, and that's, that's why I asked the question, because I wanted to know what else we could do as council beside, you know, in addition to listening to the citizens. And so I agree with, with Marlene's comments as well. So I would hope that we could send that link out, and then maybe include our phone numbers so that citizens have a ready access to, to be able to contact us with any questions that they might have about it. And then be prepared in two weeks to vote.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Some of them to the citizens and some to Dave. Dave, earlier you mentioned the, we, we did this and we did that. Can you tell us the list of all of the people that were on the committee?
Yeah, so it was Sharon Wright, Mark and Mike and Marlene Lordson, and Jeremy Searle and myself.
Great, thank you. And someone, I didn't catch the name, talked about that, that they felt like this was hurried. And I would like to have them tell us what they believe an unhurried process would be, look like. Does, does somebody know who that was?
I don't remember whether it was Sharon or Megan.
It was me, Sharon.
Okay.
And I do, I know that this is an arduous process, but I don't feel that there has been sufficient debate. And I think, Wendy, that if you will take the time with me to get that letter out so that we could discuss pros and cons, that would be a good way to educate people about even what the topics are. Because I think that 99% of our city don't even know if they should be involved in it. And, and before I got involved, it was Title 10, who cares? You know, I, I just thought our city will make good decisions on our behalf. But some of these are land disordinances and important things that really need to have people discuss. And, and to just say, oh, well, you know, we've spent long enough on it. We can't say that, because this has been a COVID year. This is, there has not been real discussion. I kind of like this Zoom format where we can talk, but we don't have any real back and forth where real true questions can be answered. I would like a list of those things that are concerns. And then I would like to hear Wayne, or Severin, or anyone who's on the planning commission, say why changes should be made, or, or they would like to see things made, and then I'd like to hear other people discuss that. Last month, at the planning commission public hearing, I said, I remember very well when, when our town came together to vote on one or two acre lots. And I don't even remember how I voted, but I remember that there were 200 people there at least who had strong opinions, and there was great discussion, and people really did go away feeling that they had been able to say something. And again, I don't remember if I was in favor of one or two acre lots, I, that part I don't remember, but I remember thinking, this is the way the process should work, where people can really talk and really discuss these things. And I just haven't seen that yet, even though we've, you know, for one thing, there's so many issues to hammer out. But another thing is that it's been such a weird year that it just has not been discussed. And these are important issues, we, you can't just say, well, it's been three months. Yeah, it's been three months, but there still has not been real discussion about them. I want to know what the exact problems are, people are concerned about, and I'd like to know, hear from the planning commission who have discussed it, I know they've discussed it a lot. I would love to hear them say, this is why we feel this, this is the wording, this is the way it should be. And then I'd like people who are concerned to, to also say, this is why we don't. But no one with the, how many of us are on here right now? There are 30 out of five of us, many of whom probably are, are not even on, because there's just names are up. But I would really like to, to get more than this, who really want to know the answers, and they won't unless we, unless they know that there are issues.
Okay, so my next question then is, you talked about debate, what does the debate look like? How does it happen? What format, what do you, what, what is your vision of that?
Um, I don't know, that's why, that's why you're on the planning commission, and I, why you're on the city council and I'm not, Bob.
Well, but, but my, but what I'm trying to do, and the reason for the question, is if I have greater insight into what your vision is, then I have a greater ability to have understanding and either support or not support it. So without understanding that, I, I'm kind of left in the dark.
Uh huh, and I, and I understand that, and I appreciate that. I noticed that the Burgers asked the question, how do I learn more about this? You know, if I'm, if I'm wanting to learn, who do I ask the questions of? I think a good starting point would be to, to list all of the things, Sherry noticed that there were underscores and red things and crossouts. I, I know that there are people in our town who feel strongly about some of these issues. Why not give them a chance to say why they are strong, feel so strongly about it? In a, and again, you're back to what format would that take? A public meeting where maybe they're not being limited by two minutes? But I, again, I'm back to saying that I don't think most of the people in our town know that these are issues they should be involved in, so we've got to publicize it before we have it. It's got to be well advertised and well discussed through either letters, or, or emails, or signs down the mailbox, any number of things. It has to be advertised before we have the discussion, or else no one will know that they want to be, want to get involved in it.
Thank you.
I have one other question to ask, I don't know if it's to Chris or to, to David, but the company that we're working with, ALP, with our contract with them, how long do they allow us to extend before we have to pay additional money?
Good question.
No, I have not done the contract with them, I think it was done.
I mean, that was done back with Steve, and I know, I mean, with the original company, it changed over to ALP, and they've been very patient with this during COVID to work through this process, but I don't know if, you know, how long that would be.
Let me kind of, again, I'll just give the background on that. So the original, the original contract was with a company by the name of Sterling Codifiers. And then Sterling Codifiers essentially got bought by American Legal Publishing. In the process of getting bought, that's what led to some of the problems last April, was American Legal Publishing took the documents that Sterling Codifiers had done and converted them to their format that American Legal Publishing is using. And that conversion did not go well. And that resulted in a version of the codification that honestly was terrible. And American Legal Publishing apologized for that. They felt horrible about the fact that that was given to our city to even review. They have since fixed that and have addressed every issue that we've asked them to address, and pretty much they've done it on their own dime, just because they, they felt bad about what had happened. They were expecting that the codification would have gotten passed back in October. We don't know at what point they will no longer support us. They haven't mentioned that, but we are definitely extending our time probably longer than we need to, or, or should. I do agree that we want to make sure and get this right, but I would just remind everybody that codification is taking our existing ordinances and putting it into a more readable document. So it's not like these issues have not been discussed, they were discussed when the original ordinances were passed. Yes, there are some changes to the Title 10. But again, I, you know, there's a difference between a change and a substantive change. And I would just like to, if we need to, let's discuss the substantive ones, and let's make sure that we're okay with those. Let's not spend our time nitpicking the heck out of this document.
I think there's some good value in that. And it would be, you know, what, what is substantive to us may not be, or maybe, and what is not substantive to us may be someday to somebody else, and so it would be nice to have some, some input on that, and, and then see what we can do to go forward. But I, I do think that there's, that there's got to be some way where we can do what you suggested, Dave, and that is, is do, do the codification and Do the codification and. And and make sure we don't have. Things in there that are, that have not been already voted on. And and I think that that's what. At least I was hoping that's what the committee you had was doing and that we'd be able to say. Pretty concisely that. We've, we've verified that everything in here has been previously voted on or. It is semantics in how it's been been. Been changed, whether it's moved from one section to another section, some, just some simple word changes without any meaning. Changed.
And and David, I want to, I want to ask that, what what Bob was just saying, so. The committee that you had that you listed those members, they were all comfortable. With going forward with this document as it stands is what I I hear you saying. And what I'm hearing Sharon say is that yes, the committee approved this document. But we want to make sure that every resident has had a chance to look at it and also approve. Or at least have the opportunity to give their feedback before we make the vote in two weeks. So I would. I guess with that, if if the, if that document is the way that the. The council and the committee feels comfortable with, then I suggest that we send that link out to all cities in a. An email slash letter and to see if anyone does respond, if anyone else has concerns. And then be prepared in two weeks to take a vote. Because we, I don't want us to overextend the. Our commitments with or our contract with the company to where. Our budget at this year, we don't have extra money to pay for additional services at this time. So I'm not saying that. That that outweighs, but we do need to have that as a consideration on a deadline.
Harry, I, this is Sharon again. Titles one through nine were all approved by the committee. We, as a committee, all agreed that ten, eleven and twelve would require a lot of work. And that's, that's the sticking point is that. There are things that are substantive, as they've said, most everything isn't. Most of it is housekeeping, but there are some things that need to be brought up and. And discussed. And do we have time to publicize it? To give the proper amount of of notice for a public hearing and to let people study it. And to find out if people are, to to point out what the substantive changes are.
So my comment would be. I like the idea of having, if the mayor's willing to do this, maybe Sharon and the mayor. Put together a list of those substantive issues and get it out to the citizenry that let us have comment. In my mind, the only way we're going to really have. Citizen comments that aren't limited to two minutes, because if we get enough people in the meeting, we have. A ton of other stuff we're trying to to get done. And it would just swell up the whole meeting. I wonder if there's any way we could do it so that from now until that. The the next city council meeting or thereafter, whatever. But we could have some online resource where people can go make comments. That way we could look at those comments, get people's feedback, and there could be even interaction with people. It's just going to be in written form back and forth. That might give us the ability then. To have the time to have the debate next time or the time after and still get all that citizen input. I don't think that would be wasted at all, because even if, let's say, for example, that we do pass it next meeting, which I'm not suggesting we will, but if we do. It sounds like we still need to make some changes to, or at least look at making changes to it, and all of that input. Would be very, very helpful to look at what changes do we make to. To Title X or chap- Chapter X. Post approval of of the codification. So it would be, to me, it'd be very, very helpful to have that kind of input. Several other council members have mentioned, we love citizen input. To me, that's, that's a way that we can do it and allow everyone to have a full voice. So that's my comment.
David, did the, did the planning commission approve this or did they, were there parts of this that went through their? Process and 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 they're, they're okay with this document as it stands now?
I'll let Wayne speak to that.
Yes, we've looked at it and to the comments that have been made for the last, at least since October. There is, the title is out there with. All of the changes that have been made to the old statue. This is something is commented on the work that Mike Lordson did. With all the changes. And underneath those changes, which are yellow highlighted. Are my comments relating to those changes, why the change was made. Why it was necessary in a couple of places. It's not that critical. A couple of sentences can be removed if they cause heartburn for for the residents. But that document is out there in total. So it would be easy to send that out. Again, it's one of those documents that's been online for a couple of months. Now, there's a second document. That we're, that we call the clean document that has all those comments stripped out of it. And it has then just what the ordinance would be. But as we went through that, we noticed there were a few mistakes. And so those mistakes are, have been listed on that document, either with a few crossouts. And a couple of additions during red. There aren't very many. There are just a few of those, but that's what the clean document, that's what the title would be if it's approved. Is that document with all the comments stripped out with a few crossouts and changes in red. But the document that the citizen should see is the one that Mike Lordson made all his comments about. And and there's some errors with that. Mike did a great job, but there are a few errors. And then my comments underneath that to explain why the changes were made. So that's the one the citizens should see to understand. The why and wherefore of the changes.
I guess one question that I think a lot of citizens have is why aren't we going back to the original documents? For the codification and then doing all of the changes as separate ordinance changes.
The changes that are being proposed now are looked at as being somewhat critical. And important. There were problems with our old ordinance. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to replicate those. Those problems with with the current ordinance if we can fix them. There were things that got left out of the old ordinance. And and so we try to get back as much as we could to the old ordinance as David mentioned. But things we felt were critical are included as changes to to this document.
And just, just to comment on that, I mean, that. That actually was the goal and that was the the whole point of reviewing this was we did go back to the previous ordinances. The only thing that got left in as a change was something that was either due to, as I mentioned. We had conflicting text in a few of our ordinances and so we tried to standardize that. Or it was a state change or it was an LEI change due to trying to bring us into conformance with the way other cities. Have named certain things. So those were the changes that were left in. But other than that, it was. We, we were able to find backing documentation for most of the ordinances. And the things that were initially listed as a change.
Any other questions or concerns from the council? Okay, so.
Mayor, I would just like to know if we, if we are giving our citizens ample time to respond to us. When would this letter go out?
I don't know. That's, I I will meet with Sharon and we'll try and get a letter written. And then I like Paul's suggestion. I'm not quite sure. The best way to make that happen, but for to make it possible for people to. Contribute somehow online with questions and comments between now and two weeks from now. So we'll get the letter out as quickly as we can. We'll try and make a venue available for citizens to. Participate, ask questions and get information, not get information, but provide us input. And then I think we'll just have to see where we are in two weeks if we feel like we've heard. Or if we still need to hear more.
Mayor, as you. I, I think it's important to ask the citizens to be specific as to the section that they're referring to. So that it'll be easy for for us as city, we're working on that to go and look at that specifically without. Having to hunt through the document to find their comments.
Thank you. That's good, good point. All right. Think we can move on from here and talk about creating a new city zone. At the mitigation properties. We heard some good comments tonight. I would just like to caution the council. I think we ought to very much consider creating a new zone and rezoning this property. I just would. I don't want to box us in to something that's, that doesn't leave us the flexibility we may need as we move forward. So I think we got some good suggestions from. People that live right there that are experiencing the actual impacts now. And we have to consider our obligations and duties to them and but also knowing. You know, barring having a, also just having a deputy stand there all day and all night. There are probably going to be people that are going to be. Accessing that area, no matter what we say or do, and so we, we ought to consider how best to manage that. Without saying Ali, Ali Oxenfree, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying that we've got to consider the reality of the situation. So. Anyway, that being said, what do you guys have to?
I've had a couple of thoughts about this. And. Actually, from some of the citizen comment. I I've got a proposal that. First off, I don't think we're in a hurry and that's good. So we don't have to be in a hurry on on doing anything there. My, my other thought was. I think it would be useful. Or at least for me, it's useful to think with the end in mind. So ask myself. What in, you know, sometimes we can get lost in the zoning jargon and all this other stuff and it just confuses us. And so I'd, I'd honestly like to think in terms of what do we want this to look like as far as. Use and just talk about it openly like that. And then walk backwards into, okay, in order to get that, now what zoning do we need to have in place? And I think the planning commission has done a pretty good job of that. But I I still feel like maybe some of the citizens, especially those that do live up there. Aren't a hundred percent convinced that. That what we've got is where we really need to be. And so here's my proposal that we form a small citizen committee. Look at that and study it for a month and then come back to us with a suggestion on zoning. I I especially really appreciated Greg's comments about. How, you know, if we, if we just go no trespassing, we might actually end up. Cutting ourselves off from some opportunities and funding. And I'd hate to do that. But at the same time, what I also do not want. Is I don't want it to turn into, you know, a a sundance ski resort. And so I think there's somewhere in the middle. And if we could possibly get a small group of citizens together and let them discuss those issues. And come to us with a proposal, I, I think that would be a really good way of of approaching this. And especially with the citizens that live right up there.
David, I, I agree that we need, we need that input. One of the things I've been working with our insurance company, government trust and. They do say that it is not something that we should wait on. There is some liabilities with, without having something in place. If someone gets injured, as Tori said earlier, there's, there is some steep places. We have it. The steepness of the property in certain places so that the deer and and other. Wild animals can get in and out, but that back slope and the slope that goes up against the Richard's property is very steep and dangerous and. The inlet channel is also very dangerous. It's considered an attractive nuisance. If somebody goes up there and looks in and says, wow, this looks like fun. Unless we have signage or a designation, it makes it difficult for our insurance company. To protect us in terms of that. Not that that's our only issue, but it is one that is a legal and liability issue that costs the city money. The other thing is when talking with our sheriff's deputy on. I don't know if he's still on or not, but on enforcement, it is very, like the mayor said, it's hard to enforce. But. If it is no trespassing, he said, that means everybody. That means those of you who live around that want to take your grandkids sledding. That means you. And so it's either all or nothing when it comes to that type of of designation. The other thing is, I think it was Sherry that talked earlier about trail access. There would, at this point, there's not really the possibility of a, of a trail access from there. From that particular piece of property because of other. Other private property that's, that's there. Our current trailhead, of course, the avalanche mitigation is. Is three years away of even possibility. We're working with. With our engineering firm and with the government to make sure that we. Have the adequate funding and things are in place, but it will take time. We are not. Planning on any design that would take out our current trailhead. You suggested coming off of Skylake and Broad Hollow, and I don't know if you realize that between. The street level and the city property, there is private property there and we do not have a trail easement through private property. From below, so that is not a possibility. And so. Those are just some things to consider when we're looking at this. Of course, I hope that citizens realize that. Just as we've had other zoning issues tonight, zoning isn't always, it's not set in stone if. If someday down the future, there are those that would like some recreational opportunities for residents. Maybe that's it, but it seems pretty clear to me that there's, there are more people that would rather it. Not be recreational at this time. I mean, we've been living, breathing this for, for since the fires, two and a half years, trying to get the funding, trying to get. Everything in place to get these things built to protect our city. And I don't want, I would really appreciate it if we didn't do anything that damaged or. Change the integrity of the project and the fortune, how fortunate we were that this has been put into place so that we don't have to always be. Wondering every night if that slope is going to come down the hill. And so at this point, I'm still, I mean, I appreciate what Greg said. I. I understand that that might limit some of our, our funding capabilities for revegetation, et cetera. But at the same time. I don't know. I'm just thinking about. What our insurance company and what our sheriff's deputy has said to me and. And what the residents who live around that mitigation and of course myself working hard to get that in in place.
So I agree with with what Dave, what Dave and Greg had said. I think that we need to look at what. Greg thoughts are there. How can we accomplish getting funding? Without. And how can, how can we mitigate or minimize the? Without uh and how can how can we mitigate or minimize the uh? Trespassing without trespassing, does that make sense? Um we do have signs up and so I think the city is covered. Because we have posted signs that says no trespassing and so uh when anybody violates that, they're they're uh. They're taking on the responsibility themselves, um I think that um the. Way that the uh zoning is written, that it lacks a lot of definition and clarity as to. What is not allowed? And that's what we as the citizens around it are looking for, I know there's been some concerns that said, well, when you start defining. That um you can't do this and you can't do that, then you're actually opening it up. For everything that you don't list list on you on there, but that's solvable with five words which says. Uh. Uh yeah, what are they now, they're uh.
Including but not limited to.
Yes, included but not limited to, thank you, Paul, and and that that's what needs to be in there and um. We we need to have where there's that it's not a a storage facility for equipment, that it's not storage. Facility for supplies, that it's not uh uh things that are distracting. To the surrounding homes and um and that's where we as the local citizens. Want something in writing that defines that and so um. I think that uh Dave's thoughts about sending it back out and getting some committee involvement, some people involved. I think it's a good idea and I I think that this is uh is premature at this time.
I I agree, I think we ought to, I always hesitate to wa- to make decisions when we just don't know much about it, uh we hear. More anecdotal um evidence than anything else when we get spontaneous. Um comments from the the citizens and and well thought out, I I don't doubt that, but. Sometimes it it just takes a little bit of time and research to 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 dig down to get some really good uh resolution, so I I appreciate. Um I mean Carrie's concern is we can't wait forever and I agree with that, but I think maybe a month, we could take that time. Uh get a citizen committee together to educate us on, I think that would be uh worth the wait, especially because we do have those tri- no trespassing signs up in the meantime.
Um and I um I would I would recommend that. We do have citizens that are right there, you know, we don't want people peering into Tori Isaac's bedroom, you know, um so tho- those. Near citizens, but I think we heard something really valuable from Aaron Low tonight, that people that live near-ish. I mean, we that's the perfect example of what they what they mean by attractive nuisance. And so those neighbors that are near-ish, we probably ought to hear. They ought to be participating on this committee also, so that we can make sure that we. End up with a workable solution that people are gonna actually abide by, um additionally. Um I think um. I would really, Jody, would you be willing to distribute the um? The minutes from the planning commission meetings where they discussed this to the council? But then if there's a committee, also them, because I think the planning commission has. Done a lot of consideration of some of these things and it would be. Good for us to at least consider all the work they've done already and the discussions they've had. Might answer some of those questions and concerns and not be a waste of their time, so it would be nice. I would encourage all of you to read their their discussion.
Those were given to the city council as part of the November planning commission minutes, start in your pocket. And uh I can put draft watermark on them and uh place them on the website.
Okay.
Mayor, I also wanted to say, I'm not opposed to a committee at all, I think that's that's great, I just want to make sure that we're looking at all angles, not just. Recreational opportunity.
Right, right, well, and I think some of their concerns about the city. Um potentially using that property for storage or you know, those are legitimate concerns and those. Um ought to be addressed in this for sure and I think the planning commission, you know, considered that too, but I just wanna make sure that um. Those things are considered and and we do have no trespassing signs up there right now, so we should be able to enforce that in the meantime. While we're making a good decision.
And and we just put a chain across the the driveway that leads up into there and so that's another reminder that uh. Be uh beware when you when you go past that chain.
I think another thing that would be helpful, I I know we've done this, but. You know, the more notice you give, the better, just send out a send out a citywide email saying. Those properties are off limits.
Okay.
So at least our citizens know the rules. Can't solve Salem, but we can at least solve us.
Yeah, because we have opened up the switchback, so there are people coming from outside of our city that will that go up that trail access, but uh. Hopefully, they don't notice the other because when you drive by, you don't really see the basin unless you get out and walk up, so hopefully. That will um that people will just stay on the public trail.
Uh can I make a comment, I think I need to maybe stand up for the planning commission a little bit here, you know, there's a city process. Uh for rezoning and and we've done that, uh we've had two public hearings on it. The planning commission has uh has heard comments and um. You have our recommendation, now you can choose to disregard it and and that's fine too, but now you're creating a citizens committee. I don't think you're gonna get any different comment than what we've already received in the public hearing. And and we certainly felt that we were, I know there's some disagreement. Uh but we felt that we were very responsive to the comments that were made by the citizens primarily up there. I don't know that we had any other comment from anybody in the city other than those that kind of surround that area up there. And uh and based on that, then we the recommendation was made um. As as we've made to the city council, so um anyway, I did just felt that I needed to make a comment in that regard.
And when you had. You had two public hearings, correct?
That's correct.
I think that's one of the reasons that I really want our city council members to read your minutes, because I want them to see. That deliberation and know that you guys really did take time and um thought and consideration and not go back and just. Reconsider the same things without at least knowing what's already been done.
So 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 far, we've had three public hearings plus all the work that the planning commission has done, plus the citizen input, correct? So are we anticipating something different with this committee or are they just going to review what's already been done? I I guess that's the question that Wayne's kind of asking.
Let me speak candidly, um I listened to the planning commission, I was on the entire meeting and I I. Was honestly a little disappointed, not in the planning commission, but I just felt like. People were not listening, it was really kind of discouraging um to be blunt. Having said that. We. I think part of the reason that it was so discouraging is because. There. Uh two different groups were coming at this from very different angles and. And it was uh it was just really hard to get them to even think together. I think where the uh citizens up there kind of started wrong was thinking that we could possibly do this as a residential. And with some special, you know, sprinkling over the residential overlay. Um which I I don't think is the best plan, I do think that the public facilities is the better idea. But I still feel very strongly that um it should be protected. So that it's not turned into, you know, a a recreational area. Um and has, you know, all the things associated with that, so that's why when I started my comment. I actually feel like if we. If we just think about what we want in the end and ignore all the zoning mumbo jumbo that can sometimes confuse us. Just think, what do we want that property to um be used for and and? How do we want it to look and how do we, who do we want to be up there? And and then work in reverse, kind of go backwards from there and say, okay, now that we know what we want it to look like. How do we get the zoning correct so that we can make it that way? That's a, to me, that would be a much better approach than how the planning commission meeting turned out.
Well, I I disagree with you, David, cuz that's the approach we took, if you're talking about the November meeting. We had a few comments in December, but not a lot, but the November meeting, we got an earful from everybody up there. And and they were, there was no question about it, that they they didn't want people around there, they they were. They were not happy with some of it with even the mitigation project, but they they wanted it. Left alone and not messed with and that was very, very clear and distinct made to us, so that's. That's where we started and then worked back from there, okay, how do we accommodate? That, there may have been a few other, one or two other voices that had some, were a little bit more mellow than what I'm indicating, but. But by and large, every every the resident up there that commented was, we don't want people around here, we don't want them up here, we don't want them. We want the seclusion of our neighborhood, we don't want people parking on the street. Uh walking their dog over there or anything, anything like that, so.
So.
So I understand.
I need to speak because much of uh what's being said is is uh. Talking about my comments and my involvement, uh yes, I have been extremely outspoken. Um maybe to a fault, uh okay, I'll say to a fault, I won't put the maybe in there. Um however, and I know as soon as you say however, then everything before that gets thrown out the window. Um I think that. We as citizens. Agreed to the uh public facilities with some changes and that was not. That was not accepted and so what we are insisting on and what we. Are pleading for is that you listen to the other restrictions that we would like to put placed upon it. And not just have it mitigation and no trespassing, it's gotta be more defined than that and yes. In two years, another city council, planning commission come in and change it, but they're gonna have to go through something similar. With public hearings and and getting involvement of the people and so we. Believe that it's extremely important that that uh just like John said in his letter. And it might be beneficial to read that letter is that we as a citizens have taken the brunt. Of mitigation for two years and we do not feel that our voices are being ser- seriously considered.
Do that, Carol.
There you go.
Okay. I have a question for Wayne, Wayne, um with uh the mitigation and overlay of no trespassing, um. It seems pretty clear to me that then the property would only be used for the mitigation efforts that were put into place. And that there would be no trespassing, I I I'm not really sure, um I didn't listen in on that, I've read. I've read the minutes, but I didn't listen into every comment um at that point of the discussion that you're talking about, I've. I've met with the citizens um extensively through the course of the whole mitigation, so I'm pretty aware of what their. What their um issues are, but um is it that? With mitigation, is there still the possibility of building buildings, it seems to me that if it says it's mitigation, it's mitigation and if it says no trespassing, it's no trespassing. Other than maintenance.
Let 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 me give you an example of what I've heard talked about. That there is a piece of equipment that a citizen that an city employee would like to store. On the property, we don't want that. We want it specifically identified that it's not an equipment parking lot, that it's not a supply parking lot. It is a magit- it is mitigation and that's what we're asking for, let's add some clarity to it. I don't I don't see what the problem is, is adding the clarity, it it just boggles my mind, I'm sorry.
No, but I I agree, Bob, that as you try to clarify some things. It it potentially opens it up to areas that aren't clarified. I I know trespassing was pretty, you know, it was pretty straightforward, no trespassing.
Mm-hmm.
With those five words we can put in there, that here are some examples, but it's not limited to that, we see that all the time. In technical writing and in laws and that kind of stuff and so I don't see what the problem is, I'm I'm sorry.
So Bob, can can, if we had it as um the overlay of of um mitigation only. No trespassing and then in our policy and procedures, we talk about city equipment and where and when it can be stored. So that's not necessarily, cuz then it could go for everywhere in the city, not just one particular spot. And it seems to me that those kinds of details that you're asking for are policy and procedures that we should be able to. As a council, put those into place that um that designate where and when, I mean, we're already not supposed to have equipment outside anyways, so. I think that as we go forward in and figuring out where our equipment is. It seems to me that that might be the place to put those types of things, so that it is in place.
Here's my problem with that, the city council can change that, I want it to where there has to be a public hearing. To where there has to be public input to make a change to anything that transpires on the mitigation lots. That that that's that's my foundation on why I think it needs to be part of the zoning. If we put it in some policy and procedure someplace, that can be easily changed, I wanna make it hard to change.
So. So this is the reason why I'm suggesting we do a citizen group.
Thanks, Dave.
Because if we're sitting here trying to make an ordinance on a Zoom call, we're gonna fail. So let's just let a citizen group get together and that I think they should start with where the planning commission ended. They should start with that and then just look at, okay, what do we need to add now? I wanna be clear with any citizens that might be on that group, just because you put it in, that doesn't mean that that's going to happen because. There might be some things that you add that eve- either can't be legally enforceable or they're not part of zoning or whatever. So it'll still need to go through the planning commission again. So that we make sure that we have that uh process followed, but I do think that trying to. Create this ordinance right now is kind of crazy.
Yeah, I well, I agree with that, I I agree that we can't do that here and now, it's just a discussion, that's why it's a work session. But I also wonder um with planning and zoning and land use, um what type of details can be put in as a zone? I mean, no parking zones we see in cities all the time, um does that? I I but we're not talking about a street, we're talking about a dirt area, so I don't know if that zoning is still. So you have a, you know, the mitigation area and no trespassing, no parking. Um or do we just say no, at this point with no trespassing, that's no trespassing pedestrian or motorized vehicles. So it would seem to me, I don't know though, but maybe it's something that this committee can can look into, but Wayne, I just was wondering from you on actually. Zoning laws, how deep and and specific do we do we get or could we maybe possibly get, I'm not sure.
Well, the best way is to make them so that they're, so there's no question about what is intended. So there's no misunderstanding, so there's clarity in it, so whatever the city decides, my suggestion is, let's go to the state. Land use authority, the lady up there and talk to her and present her with whatever wording the city. the city comes up with and see if that's appropriate wording for, for a zone.
I, I like that idea. I would, I would wholly support, uh, that's Meg Ryan, and I, I would fully support her input on, on this.
Hey, any other, any other input? Otherwise, we need to move on. Okay, Deputy Peterson, have you got a report for us tonight?
Yes, good morning, good evening, everybody. How are you guys?
Good.
Good. So for the month of December, uh, here's the stats that I compiled up. There were forty-one officer-generated calls. Uh, majority of those were citizen contacts. Uh, there was also ten traffic stops made in the city during that time. And there were a total of twenty-seven public-generated calls. A majority of those were nine-one-one cell calls, but most of the time are people playing with their new Apple iPhones. So that's kind of where that was. I do need some assistance with, uh, I was out driving around the city last Wednesday and noticed I went up in, I, I believe it's Deep Forest Circle. I'm still trying to remember where the roads are and what goes where. But as I went up towards the water tanks, there were, there were four vehicles parked in the cul-de-sac, three of which were blocking the roadway up to the water tanks. So I, I need some help in, in policing that. Um, that's maybe something that we need to look at, putting a sign up that if vehicles are there, they, they can be towed. I know that's not a problem until it's a problem. And by that time, it's usually too late to, to do anything. So that's something that I think we need to look at or the council needs to look at and make some suggestions or set some kind of rules on it. I would also like to put together, uh, some community action plans. We had the fire last two years ago. Um, we also live in a, uh, well, you guys live in an avalanche zone. I would like to start putting together some community action plans so that everybody knows where to go, who to report to, and how we can best serve the citizens of Woodland Hills. Does that sound like something that, uh, council would be entertained in?
Yeah.
I would.
I don't know if you can see us, Sean. We're all, we're all nodding our heads, but we're not talking.
I'm just trying to keep track of everybody. I still don't know names. Yeah, so I'm not sure who's nodding and who's not. But yeah, um, I think that, I think we need to look forward and, and by what history has already taught us. I would like to have, you know, emergency evacuation plans for all types of disasters. And let's go through some drills. Let's get everybody in the city on top of it so that, um, the next time we have a disaster, it just, it flows smooth. Max did a great job. Um, I would like to build on some of the things that Max used and maybe make them better if we can. You know, maybe Max did the perfect thing, but I would like to expand on that. You know, I was a member of search and rescue when the avalanche came down. Oh, Evan, this has been ten or twelve years ago. I don't remember how long ago it's been, but I was a member of search and rescue. Was up there when that happened.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious to see what the spring's going to hold. If we have a wet spring, are we in, you know, danger of mudslides? It's something that I think we need to look forward to and plan for it now when, when there are no mudslides. So I would like to start some, uh, meetings with, uh, Craig and get that going. Hopefully, put an action plan together. Somebody from the council, I would be more than happy to have assist us with that. I don't know, the mayor wants to pick somebody or.
Sean, I'd like to be involved with that. Uh, we have a public safety committee that hasn't met for a while, but, but we have, uh, we have done some of the things you're talking about, but we sure need to freshen up on them. Um, we have an evacuation map. We've given those to citizens at, at, at prior times. But, but it is time to, to refresh that. And I'd like to, I'd like to be involved with you if the mayor would, would allow that.
I would also like to be involved in that. Um, uh, in, in the logistic part of it. I know that we need, uh, a collaboration between, um, communication and, um, public safety. So I would also like to be involved with that.
I think the more, the, the more people we have involved in it, the better, the better we can make the situation be. Anybody.
Let's move forward and have you, uh, Deputy Peterson, work with the public safety committee with Doral and then involve Carrie also so that she can, um, talk about communication. And then as far as what you talked about, um, the like parking situation up on Deep Forest, let's do, um, let you and I get together and talk, and with Craig and talk about what we think we would be a good solution and then bring it back to the council and make sure that if there's anything that we need to consult with them on, we do. And then let's just get, let's just move forward on it.
Great, great. I've also put together a packet for the Neighborhood Watch.
Uh, okay, we can't hear you. You're very muffled.
I put together a packet, the Neighborhood Watch program. I don't know how, what the interest level would be with that, but I would be happy to sit down with your council members individually and what I've got put together and see if that's something that the city would like to be involved with. Um, it's completely generated by the citizens. Sheriff's Office will offer support. However, we need a lot of input from the citizens to make the program successful. And it doesn't have to be the exact, uh, program that I have here laid out. We can tailor it to Woodland Hills' needs so that it serves them better and everybody's happy with it.
Okay, so will you get that packet to Jody and have her just, Jody, did you distribute that to us already? Have we already?
Not, but I will do so. I'll get with him.
Okay. And then we will put it on a future agenda as needed. That's great.
Uh, that's all I have. It's been a pleasure working up there so far. I really like it.
We appreciate everything you've done. Living as well.
Yes, thank you.
Let us, um, the updated surface rupture map. As of the ordinance. Ready?
Aaron Low.
I'm just looking to see who I need to mute here.
It's Aaron Low.
Okay, I got him. All right, so, uh, GeoStrata um, recommended that we amend our geological hazards map to take into, um, account the change in the surface rupture fault, um, that was, uh, approved by the state. Looking at that, that would mean changing a few things in our natural hazards assessment ordinance, which is now called a geological hazards ordinance, um, which we should be using that term instead. And it would involve us making changes to City Code Title XI. Now, I know that we have not approved City Code Title XI yet, nor have we held a public hearing on City Code Title XI. I hesitate to make any of those proposed changes or change the ordinance at this time to reflect the surface rupture fault map until we have a Title XI passed. And then I would suggest we go back and make those changes immediately. Of course, those changes would require us to amend our natural hazards assessment ordinance. We would hold a public hearing. And notice that we are amending it to adopt the most recent map provided by GeoStrata. And it would also, the new ordinance would state that we adopt all updated maps as they are approved by the state. Corbett, do you have any comments that further?
No, I mean, we've got copies of the maps. It's, it's extremely confusing to the engineers that are doing these studies because we have a map on our, on, in our ordinance or on our website that is not current and it needs to be.
So what would you suggest we do to fix that, Corbett?
Well, I think it's very similar to the billing code. We adopted the billing code back in, we specifically adopted the billing code back in two thousand seven, I think it was. But then the wording included all subsequent codes as adopted by the state of Utah. And that's, that's all you need to do because that, that, uh, mapping is updated by the Utah Geological Survey, um, to be current. And so as long as we adopt all subsequent mapping as adopted by the state of Utah, then I think it'd be covered.
Okay.
That's what I was hoping you were going to say. If we can adopt it by reference, then we just automatically get updated with whatever the state says.
You just see how much it changes.
Okay. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is the SWP P P inspection contract, Corbett.
I'm going to defer to Wayne.
Okay.
Wayne's going to work on it.
Yes, um.
I think everybody got.
Okay, we're going to discussing that at our coming planning commission meeting and we'll be coming back to the city council with a recommendation on that. Right now, we've had, uh, we've interviewed and talked to, uh, an independent contractor who certified to do the inspections. And, uh, that seems to be, uh, the best alternative for the city to pursue. Spoke with, uh, Chris Hellvey about billing process and the city is already geared up with what it's doing now to accommodate the kind of billing that would be, uh, uh, commensurate with, with the inspections and so forth. So it's, it's moving forward and, uh, we'll, we'll get a report to you after our, um, uh, January meeting.
Thank you, Wayne, for your work on that. All right, um, the discussion on the feasibility of selling or leasing the abandoned water line, Corbett.
Um, back in two thousand fourteen, when we replaced Woodland Hill or water main in Woodland Hills Drive, we did everything we could to maintain the old line, simply because it was an asset there that if somebody wanted it, could use it for a conduit. Steve Westfall with Rocky Mountain West Telecom is on the call, or at least he was. And he's, they're interested. They have a contract with CenturyLink to get fiber to the tanks or, uh, they have a contract with CenturyLink to get the fiber to the top of Broad Hollow. And then CenturyLink has a contract with, uh, T-Mobile to get, uh, contract or to get fiber to the tanks. They're totally within their rights to just get an excavation permit, install their own conduit and do their own thing. And we've been talking, I've been talking with them to try to, you know, get them to at least consider using that old water line. And in, in conversation with Chris, we, we don't really have the latitude to be able to sell it um, as an asset because it's public property. It's a public infrastructure and the bidding process and everything else that we have to go through to, to be able to sell that. Rocky Mountain West or Steve Westfall is, we've, I've talked with him a couple of times. We've talked about leasing, about a purchase. The purchase option is an extremely difficult way to go. But what I'd like to, what I'm asking the council to do is at least open the conversation to negotiate with Rocky Mountain to be able to lease that and come to an agreement. If you want to put together a, there's a committee to consider what the options are and work, work with, uh, Steve to figure out, uh, what's best for the city, what's best for Rocky Mountain. And then, uh, present something to the council as far as making a decision. I mean, obviously, we can't make a decision in, you know, as far as, uh, uh, negotiations for pricing and that kind of thing in a public meeting. It needs to first be done in a, in a closed session. But at least start the discussion or approve the, the conversation to start so that we can get to the bottom of this before those guys just decide to do their own thing.
So. In here for us.
I guess here's, here's my question. I'm still a little confused. I think the email you sent a few weeks ago said that we're really not in a very strong position. And so I would think that we would approach them and say, how much are you willing to pay? And then they would say two dollars and we might have to go, yes, because that's all we can get out of it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know why we would need a committee for this kind of a discussion. I guess.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not asking for a committee.
Um, well, is, is the council willing to, can, really, seriously willing to consider probably leasing that pipe, possibly selling it? But according to Corbett, that would be very difficult. But if we're, if we're willing to consider the leasing of it, really truly willing to, then I think we can just lob the ball back to, um, Steve Westfall and say, what, what's it worth to you?
Miss Mayor, if I may, may interject for one second. My name is Steve Westfall. Thank you all for having me in this meeting.
Thanks for coming.
I'm, I'm here for Rocky Mountain West Telecom on behalf of CenturyLink Lumen. A lease is one of those words that, that, uh, CenturyLink Lumen is not considering. They're not interested in, in a lease. It's, it on lease, it becomes a problem in the future because of so many different options and, and differentials between ownership and leasing. You know, and we greatly appreciate the opportunity to use the facility. But, you know, as, as Corbett has mentioned, it is, it technically is a government asset. And that, that creates a lot of other legal issues for CenturyLink Lumen to provide their service because of the circumstances of which a lease is designated. I have, I have several concerns and questions. Um, and, and, and it's up to you guys. If you want me to address them right now, we can certainly open it up for discussion, whether, you know, yay, this is good. I've, I know where you're at, whatever. But.
Okay, Steve, why don't we talk? And if it looks like it's going to go on for very long, we'll cut off and re, and re-agenda it or schedule another discussion.
Okay, um, obviously, number one on our end is the cost. I'm, I'm reading through Corbett's email again. You know, different contractors have suggested fifteen dollars a foot. My math, I'm just doing rough math again. I, I've got a lot of stuff going on, but that's roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And then I see the cost of two inch and a quarter conduits, which is, uh, probably going to be in an additional forty thousand dollars plus or minus on, on our end for that. And again, like I said, I'm just doing rough math. That, that puts us approximately a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to construct this project. And to be honest with you, I do not think that's in my budget, what that has been planned for me for this project. It, you know, and again, like I said, the lease thing, we're not, CenturyLink does not want a lease. And we still have the question of connectivity, which, I've spoke to Corbett before. And he, he suggested that I make the recommendation that the city proof the conduit I make the recommendation that the city proof the conduit. Via sewer camera. And I do know that there is about three instances where there may need to be new manholes or. And or access locations. Installed within, within that run. Another concern I might have is future access. If in the future. Century Link Lumen needs to access these facilities. Is there gonna be a? New permit? That has to be applied for and a cost applied for. You know, obviously, we, we, we all see that, that it is a government asset. It's, the selling of it is tough. With, with that being said. Another option I would like to. Ask for is. Would the city be willing to? Dedicate. A recorded easement. For Century Link Lumen. Where the existing water line is installed currently, meaning Century Link Lumen has the only rights to. I'm just gonna say this, a. Two-foot swath center line each direction of the center line of that. Water line, meaning we have the rights to be in that for. Two foot plus or minus from that water line. You know, those are just some of the things on. My radar from talking to the folks at Century Link and Lumen. And, you know, like I said, we're, we're willing, more than willing to accommodate and. Try to use the facility. But. Unfortunately, lease is not in our option. That is not something that.
Right, thank you.
So if the city didn't or couldn't sell it. Your other options, a whole lot more money than what you mentioned. That's definitely your, your best route.
But my question is, what does it cost you to put your own line in?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's way high. So your budget only has this choice if you can't spend that much. That, that underground line that exists for you already, if we choose or find a way to, to deal with you. Is obviously your best choice. I mean, you'd agree with that.
I, I can't deny that. Um, my question to you is. I do know that Utopia follows almost the exact same path that we are proposing. Why? Didn't Utopia not utilize the water line?
They obviously had more money than you. I don't know.
Well, I, me personally, I don't have that much money, but I'm just, I'm just, these are questions that.
Yeah.
The powers that send your link have, have put on me. How come? Utopia wasn't. I, I, I don't wanna use the word forced. How come Utopia did not? Utilize the water line in lieu of construction theirself.
So there's a fundamental difference between what you're doing and what Utopia was doing. Utopia was installing a line. And providing service all the way along that line.
Yes, sir.
That's the difference. You're wanting to go up to the water tanks. And so the water line gets you most of the way there without having to do any digging. And then you, and then you can do the digging for the remainder of the way.
Yes, um, I agree a hundred percent and I do know that. I don't know exactly when. Century Link actually had same opportunity as Utopia to provide service. Meaning. To individuals to anywhere else. And the water line was also brought up in that conversation with Century Link as well.
It was, and it's been brought up with each of the, each of the groups that provided, um, RFAs. Um, her response to our. Our proposal. And each one of them either decide, well, each one of them somehow had to address that, that issue.
Sure, and understood. But I guess on our end, that's one of the concerns is how come they deferred? And chose to make their own construction versus using the water lines.
They were putting in a whole backbone up the road plus branching off into every street. And so their purpose and your purpose are two different, two different venues. I think that's what, that's what David was trying to explain and. And so it wasn't in their plan because the water line goes can all the way up. And they didn't have that, that ability then to branch out to every street, which is what their plan was.
No, I, I understand that and that's what I'm referring to. I, I don't recall exactly years, years ago, Century Link had the exact same opportunity that Utopia had. They were denied because they didn't want to go into the water line to use, to utilize the main structure. And then branch off.
No, there were other reasons that Century Link was not selected. In fact, fundamental other reasons that had nothing to do with them either using or not using that line.
Yep, and, and, and I appreciate that. This is, this is news to me is, is I was brought in. What, this is considered an FT three project, a fiber to the tower project. Which is, we on, on. Century Links end are trying to provide a service to. A customer being T-Mobile in this instance. And, and, and I get bits and pieces from individuals here and there and this and that, just like everybody else does in construction. So.
Yep.
You know, like I said, we, we don't have a problem trying to accommodate and use. The existing facilities that are in place, but I also know that there. And Corbett, correct me if I'm wrong, I know that there is. Possibly three locations. That new manholes would need to be installed and because of tees. Uh, nineties, um, and, and those, those situations.
Okay. All right, so, um, I think keep, keep talking to Corbett and, and see if there's a reasonable way. Apparently leasing is not gonna work, but if there's a way that we can make this work to benefit you and us, that would be great. Otherwise, you know, and, and then if we need to come back to the council. For. To move further along, then that's what we'll do. But for now, um, just continue talking to Corbett and see if there's. If there's something that would work for you. Then we would be willing to consider it. Hey, wait, Chris.
Interested in abandoning that line and, and selling it, because we could look at, get with the attorneys, find out the correct procedure. We could open it up. I believe we'd have to open it up on the market. So Century Link Comcast, Utopia, whoever wants to come in and bid on that. Um, could have an equal shot.
Okay, Chris, will you just kind of follow up and see what we would need to do if we wanted to do that?
And consider selling just the space instead of the, the whole pipe. And then it wouldn't be as expensive for them, uh, because then we could sell the space to multiple if we, if we were asked.
Have they ever thought about just using Utopia? The fiber's already up there. They just gotta make a. Four hundred foot run and they're done.
They should talk.
That, that's, that's understoodable, but our client, T-Mobile has asked. Century Link Lumen to provide the upgrades to their tower. On, on that end, it has nothing to do with Utopia. From, from my perspective. I guess. So, so there's so many variations that can. Take place with this. I mean, I guess. Another, another. Situation they asked me to ask. We have not applied for a permit for this. What is our timeframe? To, to do the permit process if we were just to build it ourselves.
Um, you know what? That's something that you can talk about with Corbett. I don't think that's, uh, something we really need to spend time on in a council meeting and I, the council members don't really. Have that information, all of them at their fingertips anyway. So, um, I'd encourage you to have that conversation.
Mayor, can I get some bullet point?
Thank you for coming and this is, it's good food for thought and good questions you're asking.
So. Mayor.
Yes.
If I get some bullet points, maybe.
Would the council be opposed to selling? For the right, for the right price, oddly. Um, also, as far as Steve's point. In, in the right of way, any public utility has the right within that right of way to use that right of way. But would the council have any heartburn about granting an easement? For the, like Steve said, for center line, two foot both ways of center line of that pipe. That easement doesn't, doesn't lock anybody out, but it does give. Century Link the, the ability to access that. And they would have to access it just like anybody else does and as far as in a public right of way. They would have to do an excavation permit. They'd have to provide all the documentation to be able to make that work, but does the council have any heartburn with? With designating a specified easement.
Personally, I think we'd have to research that.
Uh, Corbett, is this on the side of the road? This isn't going up the road, right? We're not digging up asphalt.
No, it's, it's in the road, but just like any other, any other, uh. Excavation permit, any asphalt work that's done has to be done according to city standard. Uh, has to be repaired according to city standard and so technically, I don't know, I mean, maybe this is a, an answer that we need to get. From the attorneys, but if it's in a, if it's a public utility within a public right of way. We cannot stop them as long as they follow the rules. We can't stop anybody. Not just Century Link, but we can't stop anybody as long as they follow the rules as far as the city is concerned.
So I guess I'm confused, Corbett. If they already have the right to put that in the public right of way. Why would they need an easement?
I, I don't know that and that's, that's my question.
The, the, the reason behind we would want an easement. Utilizing that existing water line plus or minus two feet, I'm just using it as an example. Is for future problems that may arise, meaning a road move. A, um. Ditch project, a, any kind of project that the city. Is doing within that path. A prescriptive easement, a, a easement within that that says you are granted this space. That would require the city to pay for the relocation of our facilities. If in the event that there ever was a road widening project or anything like that, because time and time we see again where. Century Link Lumen is granted right away permission. They place their cable, they do their thing per city requirements, everything. Six years down the road, ten years down the road. A road widening project comes out and says, hey, your stuff is in the way. You have to move it per franchise agreement. If we had a dedicated easement that said. This line from point A to point B, plus or minus two feet. You know, if, if, if in the event that a widening project or whatever, just listening through the. Rest of the meeting tonight, I don't think that's gonna happen, but those are some of the things that we have to look out for is. Okay, yeah, we pay you this lump sum of money now, ten years down the road, the city comes through and says, hey. Oh, you know what? We've decided to widen this road. You. Century Link, meaning you, has to pay to relocate that facility again. So that's, that's where I'm at with the.
Dave, let you and I work out the details. But I, I think we can come to an agreement. Let's you and I work out the details and then I'll bring something back to the city council. If, if time is an issue, then we could possibly, possibly hold a special meeting, but. If you and I can work out the issues, I'll take it to the, each member of the city council. Um, and make sure that everybody's good with it before we have another meeting.
No, I understand that. I understand that, but I'm at the point right now. Where. Century Link Lumen's client, T-Mobile, is pushing us to make something happen. Unfortunately. We will just apply for the, for the permit to be in the public right of way. Rather than, because our client has. Time that they have dedicated to making their end of the world happen. You know, like I said, we're, we're not opposed to using this, but.
Okay.
We're on a timeline that we need to make things happen right now.
Work with Corbett, do what you can do and don't worry about what you can't and, and let us know if we need to get involved again further on this.
Okay, um. Could you guys possibly send me the minute notes?
Jody. Um, as soon as she get, you know what?
Recording of the minutes that you'll be able to listen to and I can send that to you.
Okay, and one more, one more thing I got, I would like the city to. Put a proposal together on letterhead, so I have something. Black and white to present to Century Link because. Unfortunately, none of them were available to be on this meeting tonight and. If, if city's willing to produce a proposal. With, with everything, then it makes it easier for me to go back to Century Link.
Hey, work that, work that, if you can get something worked out with Corbett, we'll put it on letterhead. If, if we think there's a reasonable thing that will benefit you and us.
Okay, I'm, we're, we're more than happy to do that and like I said, appreciate your time. Um, Corbett, I will look forward to getting ahold of you and we will try to work out some details and see what happens.
Perfect.
Great. Next item is still you, Corbett, uh, importing the material of the water tank site.
Jody, can I share my?
You should be able to.
Is that it?
Yes, you got it.
So, on the. One of the things that we're looking at is up at the tank side, um, trying to do mitigation for avalanche. Now, this right here, everybody can see this, right? This right here is the tank. This was the pit, no, that's not the wellhouse. This was the pit when they drilled the well. That's how old this picture is. The wellhouse sits right out here in front. But this, this is the avalanche chute that, that we're concerned about. Now, some of the things that Ted and I have gone over, we've looked at trying to, trying to deal with, um. Getting the, the snow out of, or the snow and debris. I guess we need to be careful. We're not. We're not necessarily talking about an avalanche shooter or, or an avalanche mitigation, although it does the same thing. As much as we are talking about debris flow. Um, the reason for that is the, uh, the, um, the EWP project that's being, that's being that round. That project will cover debris flow, but it will not cover avalanche. Um, anyways, some of the stuff that we've, we've talked about doing is, is doing some kind of a, a force or a wall right here. Um, we're talking now about doing a, a series of basins. This one here is, is putting a basin right here at the mouth of the gully. With berm, with maybe a, an adid berm by the tank to protect the tank and then additional berms over here on the other side to help force the snow out into a larger basin that would be out here. All I'm, all I'm really asking the council for today is the opportunity to start work on clearing trees. All right, Jody, how do we get back? How do I stop? Sure, right there. Um. So, one of the things that, one of the things that, uh, that I'm trying to do is, is help facilitate tutors being able to build a house. And tutors are on the call as well as Dave Taylor. Now, the avalanche mapping that we've got basically decimates tutors property. If, if we can design a basin or a series of basins that will bring the snow out of the gully or the debris out of the gully and take it out on the city property where we can appropriately deal with it, it'd be a lot easier, a lot, and easier also translates into being a lot cheaper. Let me go back to, let me go back to another map that I've got. The issue, this piece of property right here is, is roughly the city property. That piece of property is six acres, just over six acres, that number right there. But that's going to be a lot easier to deal with than tutors trying, tutors and Taylors and anybody else trying to do it on their own property. What needs to happen regardless, and, and Ted Mickelson can talk to this as, as well and Puff's probably even better. This is the clump of trees that's right out at, at the mouth of that gully. The gully comes in right here. These trees need to go no matter what. If those trees go and we can start some kind of mitigation that would put a basin up here at the mouth of that gully or a berm up here at the mouth of the gully that would force all of the avalanche or debris flow to come out here on the city property. That would facilitate tutors being able to build a house unrestricted because the avalanche would no longer, would no longer affect them. The mapping that we've got from the mapping that we've got from GeoStrata puts the this is the gully right here. That, that mapping shows the avalanche going both directions. It comes out here onto city property. And then it is, it also turns and goes down onto tutors property. If we can do some kind of mitigation right here that would force all of the avalanche, it would be more, there would be more of a runout area. But it would, it would, it would take away all of this area right here that comes down onto tutors property. And then that would facilitate tutors being able to build a house. If tutors can build a house, then it would only make sense that, that, uh, they could participate. And, and the conversations that I've had with them would be that they would, will be willing to participate in the construction of what needs to be done or what could be done or whatever they could afford to do to help make that happen. Dave and Wendy Taylor are also willing to participate in helping to make that happen. Uh, one of the things that it does to, does to us is the work that's being done right now with the EWP as far as debris flow. Any work that gets done prior to approval, any construction that gets done prior to approval cannot be part of the funded project. And so it'd have to be funded with another source. Whether that's property owners contributing to it or the city contributing to it or a combination of all of the above. But in an effort to try to help, um, I've talked to several contractors as well as tuners, Taylors, uh, Greg Baird, uh, Ralphs, who's looking at building over on, uh, Maple Court or Maple Ravine Circle. Um, if we need material or if we design the mitigation that gets done up there to import, then they can save money by not having to haul it clear out of town. One of the contractors I talked to is hauling his material through Springville because he doesn't have another way close to get rid of it. Well, he's paying 250 bucks trip, a load to get rid of dirt. Um, everybody's not the same. I mean, Robert Nelson, he turns his dirt into money as he takes it to the bottom of the hill, screens it and sells the top soil in the aggregate. And so you get a comment, you, you get a variation from one extreme to the other. But if we can help facilitate builders being able to haul their dirt to the tank and use the dirt because it's good enough to use for what we're trying to do with it. Then I think we could help fund this process or this project in a way that it wouldn't cost the city anything, um, to get the work done. Ted, you want to throw in your two bits?
Uh, sure. Yeah, maybe I can just provide a little information from the engineering side. So as you might recall, uh, the city council, we, at the time the EWP project got funded, um, the NRCS also funded the planning and environmental for the, um, flood protection for under the watershed ops program. So that's on the engineering side, what we're working on right now is looking at the various communities and what other flood mitigation efforts need or could take place. And so this was the other area that was identified by the city as a potential for flood and or avalanche mitigation. The NRCS does not pay for avalanche mitigation, but they do pay for flood mitigation. And just ironically, it turns out that the flood and debris quantity or volume equals the avalanche volume. So it, we're basically designed for this, for the same volume. Um, we're right in the very initial stages of that. And that's when this kind of opportunity discussion came up with Corbett. And so we're taking a look at a little, probably a little more advanced than, um, than we would be normally to see if there's ways we can come up with, um, facilitating the opportunity for the city to uh, take some of this to, to help with the tutors and Taylors, but also have an opportunity to take some of that dirt up there that could possibly be used for the project. So in, in short, we're kind of looking at some initial, what would this look like if we do avalanche mitigation up there or flood mitigation is what we should probably call it. And could we take some of this, uh, dirt that would be available and do something with it that would help with what the city is trying to accomplish right now? But also not be detrimental to what we would want to do three years down the road if this does turn into an avalanche or I should say a flood mitigation actual project. So that's kind of what we're working on right now. Um, this initial look we're doing would, would essentially be that um, kind of, we'll call it a burn, but more of a catchment coming out of the bottom of the drainage just to help divert it away from going down through tutors property. Um, I don't know, we, we're still in the initial investigation. So I don't know that I have any answers on volumes. We're hoping to have that here in the next couple of weeks to see what it would take or what import would be needed. And then while doing it, we'd have to certainly test the importer. Um, to, to make sure that we're getting the soils we need to do, what we need to do to not be detrimental to the future project. And as Corbett mentioned, uh, because we're only funded to do the planning and environmental at this stage, uh, any undertaking is, uh, one, it would be at, at the city's expense, however that's handled. Um, but secondly, it also kind of eliminates the environmental roadblocks as well because it is a city project on city property. So, um, it, it would, there would be no environmental issues that we have to. Kind of a short, quick summary.
So then what are we asking here?
I want to start clearing trees. I mean, I don't want to do it, but I want to facilitate, I want your permission to be able to have somebody go in there and start cutting out a piece.
And maybe just to add to that, when we were looking at this original, or when we're looking at the space design or this flood mitigation avalanche mitigation project, that little knoll, the Corbett circle of, of trees would be something that would have to be, uh, removed, reconstructed. It's just basically a knoll which would cause the, the avalanche and the flood to go the wrong directions. And so to get it where we need to go, that knoll has to be removed basically where those trees are.
Does everybody understand what he's talking about or what we've been talking about?
Then if I understand it right, the trees you're talking about, Corbett, are on the, an upper side and not down in the gully. Um, in other words, when, when you remove and is that a high spot in that area?
Yeah. Yes, it is.
It won't increase mu- uh, flows before we're finished if tho- those trees are gone is my question.
So, right here is where we're talking. So this, this line, these contour lines that come out like that.
Yeah.
It show that that is a, a high spot. So what happens is, is avalanche of debris comes out of this gully right here. It hits this little mound and it splits, goes this way. And it also splits and comes down this way. If we can start here by removing trees and, and from everything that we've looked at so far, that pile of trees and the dirt that's creating the, the fork where this, where the debris can split has got to go. There's no question that pile and those trees are going to go no matter what.
Corbett, is that, is that knoll by the, uh, the trail sign kind of to the left of the water tank there? There, you know, is that sign for the?
That's a knoll. Right here at the fork in the road. There's a trail sign right there. And then the big trail sign is over here. So this, this is the pile of trees that we're talking about right now.
Okay.
Corbett, how does the plan that you have just described, how does that differ from the 2007? Uh, I just, uh, plan that they, he did for, uh, that I just did for, uh, Grizzly and Don Meacham.
It doesn't, it doesn't really. They, they described a 50 acre foot basin and they just show a rectangle sitting right here. Now, that's as far as it went. They showed two berms, a berm right here to protect the tank. And then a berm right here coming out of that gully that would force everything from that gully out into this, into that rectangle basin that was drawn on a map. They also show this, this point right here is the outlet of the gully above the Burger's home. Their design also shows a smaller berm from the outlet of that gully that came all the way over to here.
Yeah.
That would take any debris from that gully and distribute it into that basin. Now, that's, that's part of.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
That's where the cave is, where you've got.
Up here.
Yeah, right there. Okay.
How does this impact the trailhead?
Well, the trailhead had moved. There's no question about it. The trailhead would move. This, this red rect, or this red space right here, these two, this one and this one could be, again, I'm not an engineer, but it could be based on the contours. Um, the, the outline of the basin. If that were the case, then the dirt road right here revert and go probably divert and go this way. The trail would break off and go down this way. The dirt road would continue up and around to main, maintain access to the water tanks. That's, that's yet to be determined. Right now, the only thing I'm asking.
Go in behind toolers.
We'd have to do a new trailhead.
Yeah, because if all this area right here was incorporated into the basin.
Yeah.
Then you wouldn't take the trail up over the top of the berm.
Yeah.
You'd have to take the trail back that way and then tie it in to the existing where it's at now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All that, all that is still to be determined. The only thing I'm asking council for tonight is, is the permission to get started when we can, because I've got, I've got people that want the firewood. Um, once the firewood's gone, then all that's left is the stumps and pulling the stumps and moving the dirt isn't going to be a big deal. But by getting rid of this mound right here, we, we mitigate the risk of being able to turn and come out of this gully which would then, a- as long as the tutors have permission from their, or approval from their engineer. If the, if the risk has been mitigated up here, then that risk goes away from tutors property, which would facilitate them being able to build. And, and we get the first stage of this mitigation project done.
And Corbett, this is, this is Carrie. Um, all of this that you have in red around the water tanks is already city property.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, the city property also, um, the city property goes a lot, a lot further than that.
Mm-hmm.
But.
But I just meant that part at the, right at the tanks where you're going to take out the trees and where you're talking about rerouting the road. That, all of that area is currently city.
Yes, all that and the city property has a, has a pointed piece that comes cleared out into here someplace and ends up back up in here.
Okay.
Or you're like that. So this, here, these two spots right here only total about six and a half acres. And the city property up there is over 11 acres. And so, yeah, it's more than just what I've got circled.
All right. What, what is the size of that knoll? Approximately?
Uh, about half acre.
Half an acre.
Yeah, point four two.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And, and what was the questions? What, what was the comments about taking the dirt? What, what, where does that fit into the request for cutting trees?
It doesn't. Right now, right now, I'm just looking for, time is on our side as long as we take advantage of it. Um, so if right now we can start cutting the trees and we can dig out that pile of dirt, that little mound, then the engineers won't have any concerns or hope. I mean, all this is yet to be determined, but first step is going to have to be getting rid of the trees and removing up that mound where the trees are. If that's done, then will the engineers sign off for tutors to be able to start building because now the, the debris or avalanche can't turn as it comes out of that gully and it, it has to go straight out? All that is to be determined, but the first step is going to be getting rid of the trees and that mound of dirt where the trees are. And that's all I want is the city's, the city council's approval to start cutting trees and, and digging out stumps so that the engineers can, can see that there's less or no risk to the tutors property. And then we just keep going with the EWP project to do the basin and, and finish the rest of the work.
Tutors, what do you think of all this?
Yeah.
Well, that's a good question. So hi, toolers are still here. Thank you, city council. You guys rock. You guys are awesome. I know you're super tired and, and, uh, thoughts and prayers for all the stuff you guys do. Uh, so I think it's a great idea. And when Corbett, uh, suggested it, I was like, uh, that makes total sense. It's a, it's a true win-win situation. He's, his plan was basically taken, taking people's dirt that they got to haul off the mountain, splitting the difference of costs and letting him haul up to build a berm in the basins that ultimately need to be done. So it sounded to me like a very simple win-win. We own the property and so forth. And it, it actually mitigates, you know, the, the history here is, is a bit messy for everybody. What I love is a win-win situation drives us forward. Uh, we may have to, and we've already, uh, stacked a lot of dirt up there. Sadly, it probably put us in even worse situation, just leaving it as a mountain of dirt because it flows right to the path right into our land. So that probably, uh, it most certainly made it worse. But if we could dig that out as Corbett's suggesting and maybe even, uh, move that dirt around, uh, to create a proper berm that diverts the flow anyway back onto the city properly, property. It gets done what we need to do. And I think, uh, all the engineering reports are going to sign off. We'll be able to, uh, break ground this spring. Uh, and it's not just for us. I think it impacts the burgers and impacts the Taylors. It impacts really anybody that's purchased land, uh, since 2007, since the report was published. Sadly, we, we built a piece of the recommendation of the report after the avalanche to protect the towers. And it appeared like we did the other piece of the report by building two. and it appeared like we did the other piece of the report by building two basins, and sadly, it actually increased the risk to my property and other people's property to the west and the north and the northeast, maybe even southwest of that, uh, Broad Hollow Basin. So, um, that's unfortunate. And, and mu- much of that happened when nobody was here. There's no finger pointing here. But we are where we are. You know, we bought a buildable lot. We'd love to build on that lot. Um, and this seems like a really simple solution. That's a win-win. It gets us started to move debris flow down into the city property basin. Uh, and I would just suggest that we, we remove the trees and move some of that dirt we've already piled up. Just say we're gonna restack the dirt. It's, it's really simple. We already have a forty foot high thing of dirt. It's, let's just restack it to build the berm that is required anyway. And that seems like a win-win. So that, that's our point of view. Did I miss something? It's a brilliant idea.
What, what about Taylors? What are your thoughts?
We love this idea. It's excellent. We're very excited. We're hoping any way we can.
All right, and, and Burgers?
Taylors and toolers are happy about it. We support it one hundred percent.
Okay.
The only question that I've got, and I'm putting on my Park Trails and Recreation hat right now, is how it impacts uh, the, the, the access to the trail. And it looks like, again, I mean, this, this'll impact Tooler as well because it's, that trail is gonna go right behind his property. And, um, so, but if toolers are happy and Taylors are happy, well, I'm happy. We're happy.
Or do we look at the possibility of a grant to get the trail to come in some other way? I mean, there's always another way. My only question from what I've seen tonight is, are we, Jeff and I, in any danger based on that big red arrow pointing debris flow down from the cave onto our property? There's the water bars that are up there now are already directing water and debris down on our property. So Corbett, are we in any danger?
I wouldn't say you're in any more danger than you were yesterday. I don't know how to answer that. It's, it's not changed. I mean, aside from the water bars, then the water bars should help to disperse, you know, any flow instead of it let, instead of letting the flow concentrate and get bigger and bigger until it finally gets off the road up there. At least the water bars are doing more to, to shed it soon rather than letting it accumulate. But as far as danger, you're not in any more danger than you were yesterday or a week ago or a year ago.
I, I agree. But that's not something that needs to be mitigated with a berm or anything?
Well, I think it will be. I mean, as we look at this, as we look, as we look at the watershed, and we try to, and we try to mitigate the flood risk, it, it will include everything that we possibly can. Now, if that means that we do the other, that other berm, the, a smaller berm that came from that gully, um, that's what, that's what Ted's company will look at in, in the design and, and, uh, research phase of this watershed ops funding.
So, is this doable?
Sorry, what was that?
Is this doable, Ted?
Um, yes, it's doable. Um, you know, like I said, we're still, let's say anything's doable. You get enough money and enough people, we can make anything work. Um, but, you know, it, it's kind of in line with, and that's what we're working with Corbett on. It's in line with what we're looking at in this initial planning phase of the watershed ops mitigation project. So, we're just wanting to make sure at this time it doesn't do anything that would create more work or cost when the actual project's done. So that's kind of what we're kind of keeping an eye on right now. As we're looking at this with Corbett, we're trying to kind of do some of this initial design so that we can place things and build things right now that would help these property owners, but not be detrimental to the future project.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
Now, this, what we're doing right now is probably a very, you know, small portion of what will ultimately be done, but.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so basically, um, we don't have to take official council action on this. We, um, I and Corbett just wanna make sure if he starts clearing trees, that nobody in the councils got real major heartburn on that. That's all that's gonna happen right now is this little, um, first step. In moving.
So, Mayor?
The, the engineering for the project can be done so we can know what the project, if it's approved, will contain. And then that way, we can, like Ted said, we can make sure we don't do things that are gonna be in opposition to whatever the project may be in the future.
So, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, so I am one hundred percent behind anything that can get the toolers so that they can build. Um, so just let me say that right up front. But I do have two concerns.
Okay.
One, if we build the berm and it fails, what is the liability towards the city? Um, that's one concern. Second concern is, and it's kind of a big, uh, clumped with a few other things, is if we start accepting dirt, um, from whatever, whatever source, um, what is going to be the impact on city resources to make sure that that dirt is placed properly, that it's moved properly? In other words, and I hate to put it this bluntly, but I'm going to. I feel like the mitigation was one of those things that it kind of, it was just, oh, we just need to approve this one little thing. Oh, we just need to approve this one little thing. And pretty soon it was, we had to do the mitigation, otherwise the city was gonna be on the hook for hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I don't want to end up with another situation where we're just approving one little thing, and it really is a big thing that we have to swallow because we swallowed the little thing.
That, that kind of fits in with, with my question and comment. So my question is, is Ted, what is the size difference between the basin that we have on Eagle Nest and the basin that you think we're gonna have to have up there?
Well, so, yeah, I'll give you a kind of an idea. In the basin that we built up there on Eagle Nest was roughly six acre feet. And in the avalanche, um, estimation that was done back when the avalanche came down, it was roughly forty-two acre feet. So you can see it's a lot more, um, that we're dealing with in this, kind of this avalanche area. So, we, we, obviously we have to build something that's gonna be bigger. Now, honestly, we've taken some initial looks at this, and I don't think we'd get that big a basin there. So we may end up having to either accept something that will take in, um, a lesser event or look at doing some additional things up in the drainage, kind of like we did on the mitigation project where we put that debris fence up in the drainage, do something like that so we capture portions of it up in the drainage or stop it in the drainage, and then only go with a smaller portion that comes down. Because honestly, I don't think we can get a forty-two acre basin down on that city property.
I would just like to point out to the, the toolers and the Taylors and the Burgers, uh, you can, can kind of, you've heard probably a little bit tonight of the pain and the angst around a six acre foot versus a forty acre foot, or even if it's only half of that, twenty acre foot. Are you prepared for that kind of disruption up there?
It, it's more, um, it's more secluded back there, and it's just three of us worrying about it instead of, what, twenty-five property owners all along Eagle's Nest with closed roads and such. So I, yeah, I'm not too worried about that.
Still, the noise may be annoying, but so is dying in your bed from an avalanche.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a bummer digging the toolers out, because that would take a long time and the end is no reward.
Yeah, that's just, I mean, you could do it. We could dig you out, toolers. We would.
I got a, I got a big ploy now that I can use to dig you out with.
We're, we're kind of fortunate. We have probably the number one avalanche expert in the, in the state who lives in Woodland Hills, and so, um, that's good with.
Cause he's got experience.
He has experience. Ted, my question to you is, um, you know, I, I don't remember who said this, but the idea of making this berm, this isn't just taking dirt from people and Corbett just placing it. This is actually designed through your firm to withhold, uh, potential, um, a potential incident. Is that correct?
Yeah, so one of the things we have to be careful of is, so when we, when we construct the berm, obviously, we're not gonna get the basin built for some time. And if we're gonna look at doing a berm right now to direct it away from the tutors and the Taylors, we would have to have a berm that's, that's high enough to be able to direct that, um, away from them. But, uh, as importantly, as this dirt is being brought to the site or, or using the dirt on the site, we'll want to be involved with the city, or, well, some will have to be involved with the city to test the soils, to make sure that we have the right kinds of soils that we're putting in there, and that they're, they're placed in compacted property. Um, those are all certain requirements that we have to meet. Now, the, the good thing is if this happened fairly soon, we've probably got two or three years before the actual project would ever take place. And that gives you time to let Mother Nature compact and settle, um, which will, which will help. But we wanna make sure we get the right soils there and get the right effort put into it to make sure it doesn't, you know, to, to design, it, it, preventing it from failing. Um, not saying it won't, because anything can fail, but to prevent it, to do the best we can to prevent it from failing. And those efforts.
And, and Ted, with that, um, part of the design with that watershed ops project, uh, the design phase of anything is, is covered, right? So would this be, this design effort on your part be covered as part of the total watershed ops project? Or is this something that we would have to pay for separate?
Well, because I like Corbett, um, I told him that we would, this would be, uh, part of what we will, we're gonna have to do as part of the watershed ops anyway. We're probably doing it a little sooner and quicker than we would normally have done it. But, um, we can do it as part of the watershed ops project, and so it's completely funded by the NRCS. Um, and we'll just wanna, you know, we just wanna make sure that it, that whatever we do right now, because really it's gonna be up to the city to do it, because we won't have the NRCS involved right now. Um, whatever is done though, we don't want it to negatively impact what we have to do two, three years down the road.
And so to, to Dave's comment, um, what Corbett is asking tonight is for permission to start clearing the trees, um, in that little area. Is that something that if we do that, now it commits us to further action?
No, no, because the trees and that dirt, they're all on city property. So the city is at every right to do with any, anything they want on their property. Well, you know, you have the right to do what you want with your property, basically. So the NRCS can't stop you. There's no environmental issues that we have to work through because we're not doing it under the NRCS funding. So it's completely up to the city.
And is it gonna create a danger that wasn't there now?
I don't think it will adversely affect, we're still working kind of on a preliminary investigation of this, but I don't think it will adversely affect anything differently. Um, we'll just, you know, there's, there's two things I wanna look at, and I'll just kind of be right out with the city council. Two things we wanna look at. One is, if we remove those trees, I don't see anything, any harm in that. When we start removing the mound, um, because that'll have to come out to create the path or some more storage area down to what will ultimately be an avalanche. And we're gonna call it a flood debris basin because NRCS doesn't pay for avalanche.
Right.
Um, but, uh, whatever we do there, it's, we're gonna have to take that mound out. Um, but doing that, we'll also wanna look at, you know, putting an adequate berm on, on the outlet chute, if you will, of the drainage. Um, so I don't see anything that will adversely affect, keeping in mind the city doesn't get reimbursed right now because it's not been, construction's not been funded by the NRCS. Um, there's not much they can do adversely to the city for doing work on their own property.
Would there be, um, a reason for us to start? Feel like we needed to start doing that before we had the engineering done?
Um, I, so I don't see any harm in moving trees before the engineering. But before we get to moving the mound or putting dirt on site, we'll want to have a pretty good idea on what we're doing. And that's, actually, honestly, we're working on right now. We've been working on it for about a week.
Okay.
Trying to figure this out, because we'll wanna have that engineering done, so we know what we're doing, you know, before we start actually moving dirt.
Right.
Question about the, the moving of the dirt. Is, is this something that, from what I'm hearing, is gonna go on for two to three years? And do I need to put my papers in again and go back to Africa? Are we looking at two to three years here of trucks going up and down the road and hauling dirt?
So, the idea is that, well, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step back. So for the actual project, it won't start for about two, three years. Um, it'll probably take, you know, maybe a year to build it. But we're probably three years out from actually getting to the point, two to three years out from getting to the point where we're gonna start the construction. We have to go through the whole planning and environmental clearance phase, which takes about a year and a half. And we have to go through the design phase. And you're talking a federally funded project, so timelines, you know, the last project we did, we worked on two years, and that was a quick project with the whole government. So, we're talking probably two to three years before we'd even start work up there. And it may take a year to build that basin, but speaking back to the, the, the dirt that might be taken up there from some home construction, um, depending on locations in the city, you know, obviously if it's coming from tutors or Taylors, it's, it's right there. So it's not gonna grow up and down the road. But any other places if the city touches or, that could be coming up the road to get to that location. I, and, and that's really on this, kind of what the city decides to be there. But the three years I was talking about was before we even start construction on the base.
Did Ted kind of address the concerns that you brought up? Dave?
Um, in abstract, yes. And I apologize for calling anything that Ted says abstract, but, you know, we don't have the details right now. What's that? Oh, the reality is we don't have the details right now. There's an, uh, this is preliminary. Um, I hear what Corbett's asking. He wants to just cut the trees. That's, that's all he's asking for today. And, uh, as I've, as I've told him, um, my wife would kill me for saying this, but I'm, I'm, I don't live my life around the trees. Actually, I do, but anyway. So, that part doesn't give me heartburn, but the other questions still remain, they're still there. If, you know, I wanna make sure that the city, if we do something like this, uh, if we create a berm that somehow the city is protected from any liability. And then the other thing that I'm very concerned about is, is this just the tip of the iceberg? Are we gonna swallow another elephant when we're just being told that there's this just little tiny piece that we have to bite off?
Right.
Those two things concern me a great deal. I learned my lesson from the mitigation. So I'd rather say no now than be forced into something.
Hey, Dave, Todd Tooler here, just a comment. Um, I, I do agree that, that we wanna make sure we don't do anything to increase liability for the city or for the residents of the city. But we've already actually done a series of things that have increased the liability for the people that are mostly impacted, even if, even if the berm fails. Starting with not acting on the two thousand and seven report, followed by building a berm to protect the tanks, which diverts flow to the people that are on the phone today, to diverting the dirt from the other project, building another mountain, and then leaving a pathway back to my property. So we've already created a liability. So this actually removes the liability. It doesn't create one, especially if we can remove the trees, finish the design, and it sounds like, uh, we may be weeks away from the design, and then build the first set of berm that diverts it away from the people that are most likely impacted by this and into the basin that the government will then take over and run, run with. Seems to me a pretty simple win-win. We're actually reducing liability. We're not increasing it. My, my two cents.
Okay. All right, um, unless there's.
And I hope that that's true. I just wanna see an engineer sign off on that. That's, that's kind of what I'm saying.
Both of us, yeah. We, we agree with that too. Ultimately, especially when we're building the berm to protect.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
So, understanding that we won't, we don't wanna do anything until we really have a plan in place, um, does that, anything include clearing these trees or not? Corbett just needs direction on what he's gonna do to. Um, does that, anything include clearing these trees or not? Corbett just needs direction on what he's going to do tomorrow and Thursday. Um, if it's okay for him to start, or if, if you guys still have big heartburn, on the trees.
So we haven't talked, we haven't talked the money aspect yet, as far as the, the short term, you know, the budget's tight this year. We're going to have some expenses that we, and no Corbett talked about possibly city employees or hiring contractors, but somebody's going to need to be paid. Our city employees are already hitting overtime every single pay period.
Yeah.
Um, adding this kind of project, we just need to kind of bet this out and see how, how best it's going to work in the city finances if you guys move ahead.
Okay.
Well, that's what I thought we were doing with the, uh, with the, with the dirt to help offset the, the cost. And, but we're not looking at the dirt, and so, um, yeah, I, I think that's a very valid concern, Chris.
We'll help cut trees.
I'll be glad, I'll be glad to cap, cut trees. Volunteer.
In from, from, go ahead.
Corbett, have you got a comment?
I mean, right, the first step, I mean, the first step of this project, whether it's completely engineered and completely does a hundred percent, the first step is going to be clearing trees. And that clump of trees is the smallest spot that we can get started. Um, I'm not going to go up there and cut trees. I don't want to. I've got enough other things to do besides going up and cutting trees. But I know people that want the tree and want the firewood, and if we can turn them loose and let them start working up there, if they can get up the road, they'll go up and cut the trees tomorrow. And that's one piece of the project that's done and out of the way. Um, and then from there, once we get, I mean, let me guarantee you, nothing is going to get done unless the engineer signs. Um, and so the engineer is not going to sign off on whether or not we cut trees and pumps, because it has to go no matter what. But if we get the trees out of the way, it just helps facilitate getting everything else done as soon as it's designed and approved and ready to go. So that's all I'm asking for right now.
Saying that's, that cutting the trees isn't going to cost the city any money?
No.
Okay.
Not.
I mean, that's yours, yes, you are saying that, no, it won't cost us money.
Correct. The city will not have to pay.
So the people that are taking the wood are going to do the work.
Absolutely.
They're going to remove, not only, not only their firewood, but also, I mean, when we did the mitigation project, it wasn't just the wood. There's all of the branches and leaves and all of that that got left that we then were able with, um, Craig's help and S C S D's help to get the chippers there. That was a big part of it, because only, only part of it's actually firewood. So are you telling us that people would actually remove that debris as well? Or would we be looking to have a chipper with people who know how to use it? Because we don't want anyone and their dog just trying, those chippers are very dangerous. Um, up there to, to do that, uh, limb removal?
All, all I'm saying right now is I've got somebody that wants to firewood. That's one step of the project. Can I turn them loose to go up and cut firewood?
Just asking, I'm, I'm okay with them getting firewood. I'm just worried about that. If they limit and leave it up there, is that a fire hazard? Because by spring, when it dries out or summer, and there's huge big piles of just limbs and dead leaves, then that's, that's an issue that I would like to be addressed, but I'm okay with this. I'm okay with the idea of, of those that are want to build, taking their dirt up there and, and paying the city. And maybe that offsets some of the costs of, um, that are, you know, that some are concerned about. Um, but I just don't want a pile of limbs that's going to also get in our way.
Well, the, the limbs aren't going to be any drier than they are right now. All the sap goes back down into the ground, so everything is dry right now. Deputy Peterson talked about, he thought he could get the fire, the county fire crews to come up and chip the, to come up and chip the leftovers. And so, again, all I'm asking, all I'm saying right now is the wood's got to go. If we can, if we can turn somebody loose, they'll take the wood. Then we'll worry about the next step as soon as we can, and as long as it doesn't cost the city money, does anybody have any heartburn?
I don't.
I do, but I don't, I don't have enough knowledge to, to express why. Um, I, I, I wasn't in favor of the previous mitigation either. So, so I, just for a lot of reasons, but I, I, I'd like to find ways to help the tailors and the toolers, but, but I don't know what that is, but I have a heartburn.
I don't have any.
Actually, really quick, could I ask the tailors and toolers a question? Um, we, it's obvious that we're going to run into issues that we haven't discussed tonight, because we're just trying to brainstorm right now. As we run into those issues, um, you guys onboard to help find solutions. And, I mean, I've, I've got boys, I'll, I'll head up and do whatever we can to clean up brush or whatever. I, I don't have any problem volunteering and helping that way, but it sounds like you guys are committed to this and would be willing to help find solutions as well.
Well, let's just say I've already purchased an excavator, and so I'm definitely willing to, uh, help find.
Money where your mouth is, huh?
Yeah, I'm on the line, and, uh, let's just say I'm a very big problem solver, have a great deal of respect for Corbett in, in that capacity as well. You guys got some real assets in that town.
And, and I'm all for a win-win as well, and I've even talked to Corbett about, let's estimate what my savings would be, uh, for, uh, digging my, um, foundation. And I'll write you guys a check to offset any out-of-pocket costs that might get us to a berm, uh, that's properly engineered after the design phase is done, to, to pay it forward, uh, rather than wait till I'm digging a hole, if that helps. Because to me, uh, sadly, the engineering just points to the 2007 report. And without doing anything, I, I have a non-buildable lot because of that report. So yes, we're committed.
Well, and I, I think that's an important part to, for the property owners who live there, who want the mitigation, who want to make sure that there is some, some protection in place. And I'm, um, that's helpful to hear from, from the two of you. And if, if Corbett and, and Ted feel that they can, uh, start this where we're at and then get that engineering in place, then I think it, it is a win-win. And I think you're right, Mr. Tuler.
I got my questions answered, so I'm okay.
Okay. All right, Corbett, you got your, um, I think you can move forward with having people clear the trees that want them. I just don't permit the city to anything. All right.
I won't. I won't do any, I won't start moving dirt or anything until we have something approved by Jones and Mill. And the city council has, has had a chance to look at it and make sure. Doral, I'd love to, I'd love to meet with you and answer your questions and any concern that any of you have, please call.
Okay. All right, we are getting really late, so we are going to have to move with dispatch. Um, let's talk about this email from Payson about the, the sewers.
Tular saying thank you.
Thank you.
Has, does, has everybody seen the letter that came from Pay City?
I have.
Has anybody? Okay, that, Payson wants to talk. They, they want to work this out. I mean, we knew they'd come, and I've been talking about it for a long time. We've been talking about it for a long time. We knew it was coming. Um, we just, we need to, we need to work things out to where Payson's, uh, satisfied. Otherwise, we end up either raising rates, and I, I think they have the latitude to raise rates or get the contract with a year's notice or whatever. Um, so, so we just, we need to talk about.
I, I, I'll, I'll set up a meeting with, um, me and Corbett and whoever else you think.
The, uh, council person over at the sewer.
Oh, yeah, Bob.
So as I read the letter, there's two, two things that I, I had concerns over. One was, can, all of those people that haven't paid their fee, can we assess them a fee? And, and then that would, I believe that then goes off to, uh, Payson. So that, I think, would be a, a good thing to happen. The other question I have is why was the, what, what occurred that caused the rate to go from twenty-four, twenty-five hundred dollars down to eighteen something?
You have any answer to that?
Please.
So, impact fees have to be supported by documentation and studies. So Payson did an impact fee study when they originally assessed the fee at two thousand, whatever it was. Then in that impact fee study, projections were made. When that impact fee study was updated, projections were better, or, or actual was better than projected. And so you can only charge what it is, and so they had to re-impact fee based on the updated study. So that's why the rate went down.
Good answer. So, um, then where do we are with the first, first one? I don't know, there was twenty, thirty, I don't know, uh, owners that haven't paid their impact fee.
Um, I, I can't speak to that. We, I thought we were collecting the impact fee when we issued the building permit. So if we're not, and that's on us.
Maybe let me speak to that one.
Please, because a spreadsheet that Payson provided listed the names of those that had paid and how much they paid, and then listed those that have not paid. So, Jody, please.
I'm pulling up that sheet right now.
Thank you.
And I think it wasn't names, it was addresses of, of places that they believe individuals could have connected, and they have not. Did, is that correct?
Well, they, they, they were comparing monthly bills to paid impact fees. And so they, they, there was more people making monthly payments than paid impact fees.
Oh, that I cannot speak to. I don't know, we've collected.
That's the way I understood the spreadsheet.
Yeah, we've collected, um, impact fees on everyone that, uh, we're billing.
So, so then we need to somehow provide documentation to Payson so that they understand that we've paid them.
So we do reconciliation with Payson several times a year to make sure we're up to date. This could be just a function of more homes have come on in the past couple of months, uh, versus the impact check they receive. We typically pay them about every six months. If they want their check every month, that's easy to change around.
Yeah, I, I, uh,
Steve, you gotta pull yourself.
Sorry, I was just going to ask if any of those properties were ours.
I think, I, I, I'm trying to find the, the, the email, but there it is. I think that there may have been.
Well, and I was going to ask, is this, um, I know that when we first entered this agreement with them, it was all, of course, just lots, approved lots at the time that had the ability to sign on. So are they, are they saying that we haven't had enough people who are eligible sign on? Or are they saying those who have built aren't paying? There's two definitions there.
Uh, let me.
Understanding is they're sending a monthly bill, they're sending a monthly bill to a house that they haven't received an impact fee from.
So can you see my screen now?
But like,
so here, here's the date that they paid the impact fee, the address. Um, I don't know what, what the two, oh, I guess, I don't know. Anyway, so, so you, these are the different years and that, and we come down, where, where's that? Maybe this is the one that showed that.
That looks like, it shows you. The date that it was paid to the city and then the date that it was subsequently paid to Payson. So that would be everything that has been paid, not everything that's still owing.
So there's thirty-nine there, and then let's see what the, the email says on, on the other part of this. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not more prepared for this. Um, I'm opening up the Word document now.
I'm wondering if you would just let me work with Payson to reconcile this with them before we go too much longer on this, because it could just be a, uh, just a, a date or not air, but a date between us and Payson City.
Okay, yeah, because they, they, uh, they talk in here about, um, thirty-nine have paid and fifty-two are being billed. So, yeah, i- if you work that, that, that's, that, that's what I, you know, I, I think if we can get that, that'll help, uh, solve some of their, their concerns and questions. Um, but yeah, let, let's, let's, uh, do a justification, uh, or, you know, show, show where we've done what we've done and, and get everybody's, uh, happy there.
Can somebody send me that letter, please?
I will.
Chris, when you get done with the reconciliation, if any of those are ours, obviously, you know, we've got lots that there's nobody there. So if you can just send it over, we'd be glad to get it wrapped up.
Okay.
Hey, you've got it, Chris.
Thank you. Okay, um, all right. So we will go, still go ahead and set up a meeting with, let, let's get our numbers in order, and then we'll get a meeting with Bob, you and Corbett, and possibly me.
Sure.
If I need to be there. Um, okay, then, um, Carrie, the next two items on the agenda are, um, are, are your things. Are they things that you really would like to deal with tonight, or can we put them off for two weeks?
Um, we can put them off, I, I, I suppose. I mean, we are going late, so it would be nice to, to get over it. They're not pressing, but they are important.
They are. And Jody found a policy that we had already for city equipment, and she, um, got it to me today. So I, did she get it to you?
Uh, not yet. She was going to.
Okay, I didn't look at who the email went to. So she can get that to you, and maybe we can get a lot of this, um, taken care of before that meeting, so that when we get to that meeting, if you're willing, I, I really appreciate it. Um, then let's go to item number twelve. Um, and, um, I've got to step away for just two minutes. So Paul, will you take over for me, and I'll be right back, and then we'll, um, so you guys start number twelve, and I'll be right back.
Okay.
This is for, Chris is going to do number twelve for us.
Chris, take it away.
Yes, real quick, we have, um, received some money for the, um, connectors agreement for Summit Creek. Excuse me, from Robert Nelson Development of a hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars, which needs to be passed on to, um, Summit Creek. Uh, we're still waiting for a check for thirty-one thousand and a little bit changed from the Church of Jesus Christ for the, for the church built down there.
I did ask about that, and they, um, have documentation that it was sent, so we need to check our records again.
They can just send us a canceled check, that'd be awesome, because we've gone through our records a couple of different times to look.
Yeah, they said they spent it a couple of years ago, so.
That'd be good to see. Um, but we've, we've got the check, and we, if, what we'd look for is a, an approval from council to release a hundred forty-nine thousand dollars to Summit Creek.
Okay, any comments, questions? I mean, it seems pretty straightforward, right, Chris? There isn't a whole lot of discussion needed on this. This is just something that we've known about, that just needs to be passed through to the right parties.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, a- a- any other discussions or questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Uh, you know, I'm sorry, I say nope, and then I ask questions. Just which budget category do we do this out of, Chris?
This will come off the, this will be in a balance sheet, because we're just holding a liability and an, and an asset. So we'll just be taking it right off the balance sheet. We, we want to, we want to see in the profit and loss statement.
Yeah, Chris, this, this is Steve Dickert. They, the only thing that we have is that we don't know that the number's the right number. So, you know, we've, we've disagreed with what, um, Brian has sent forth from LEI. So I think the thing we need to do is review that letter again before you send us a check. Right, I want to make sure that we're actually getting the, the, the amount that we think that we should be owed at that point. So, Mayor, we may have to, um, add an agenda item to cover some of those, some of those items at some point, so. So Chris, don't send us a check yet.
Okay, um, we'll just have to come back to the next council meeting, let's have a vote on it then.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't, just so you know, I haven't seen a rebuttal letter from you stating that you guys have a concern.
So, yeah, we sent that, we sent that a couple of years ago. It was right after Brian sent his letter out, so I'll find a copy and get it over to you.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, it looks like the next item is Mayor Prey. Are you back?
I am, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, um, so the next item is appointment to the planning commission.
Okay, um, so the next item is appointed to the Planning Commission. So we, Emily Dewey resigned a couple of months ago, if you, as you may recall. And Wayne Franson talked to someone who politely declined the appointment. But then he talked to Lori Thomas and she has agreed to serve on the Planning Commission. And I'm actually, actually tickled pink, because I think Lori would be a great asset. For those of you that may not know this, there are precisely two citizens that own homes and live up here now as adults. That were raised here as children and Lori is one of them. Not only that, her hus- her husband, her father was the first mayor of Woodland Hills. So I think she'd be a great asset to our planning commission. She, if, if there's anybody that's seen the many visions for Woodland Hills through the years, it's her. I think Lori, she was on the line. I, I don't know if she's had the stamina to last until now. Let's see. She's still, are you still here with us, Lori?
Yeah, man, it's a long meeting, you guys.
So, um, does anybody have any concerns or questions for her? Or we will have that, concerns or questions that they want to ask her now before we have, before we take action on this in our meeting.
I just say thank you, Lori, for, for being willing to serve in this position. It's such an important part of our city development and growth. And, and thank you for saying yes.
You're welcome.
I, I like volunteers a lot. Is it too much to ask where you live? I'm, I'm not familiar.
Eight thirty South Oak.
By me, Doral.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Lives real close to me, too.
Okay, thank you, Lori.
Okay, I'm hearing no more questions or concerns on that one. Let us, uh, Doral, do you have appointments for the Parks and Recs Committee?
Let me ask Greg what he thinks is, if, if we should wait another meeting or. Greg, unmute, unmute yourself.
That might be really great.
Well, that would be fine. We could delay. We still haven't filled out all the, all the positions. We have an executive committee that we have assigned or appointed, but, but we have more to do.
Okay. If we could, if we could delay that, Mayor, thank you.
We'll delay that till, till the twenty-sixth also.
Yes.
Okay, great. Just a minute, I'm making a note. And also, at that meeting, we will have a report from the. From the Parks and. Parks, Rec and Trails Committee that night, too. All right, so then the next thing is this UORG mini grants. Doral?
Go ahead, Greg.
I'll take that. Uh, our, our main source of funding for parks, for, for remediation. And for new, new park facilities are Utah State Grants. And we have not been able to access those in the past, because the, the threshold for the, for city participation was so high. It wasn't, wasn't money that we had. And, and yet, for the first time this year, the, the state is offering some mini grants. Which are five hundred to ten thousand dollar grants, uh, which makes a mu- which makes our participation. Uh, as little as two hundred and fifty dollars or five thousand dollars max. And not only that, the, it's a shorter application, it's a streamlined application. And so it enables us to access a small amount of funds for small projects. Like fencing or for park, um, some park enhancements, landscaping, uh, creating an access. So, so those are, that, that's on the table now. Uh, the deadline is March fifteenth. And I would suggest we, we apply and go after, uh, some of the smaller grants. The purpose for enhanced, enhanced opportunities, amenities to Utah communities. So I think our, our project fit within that scope.
Look, so do you have to identify what the project is, is that you're applying for? So what are you, what are you going to submit for?
I, I would suggest park, park fencing and, and maybe a, a north, some, some landscaping. And an entrance point to the park on the north side, next to the Winters property.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you for looking into it, because the more grant money that we can receive. It is good for our budget and, and we do want to, as you pointed out even earlier. With the situation we're in, we need people to have a safe place to get outside. Um, and so any enhancements we can do to our, our public park, I think is, is worthwhile.
I, I, I agree, and this is kind of rhetorical question. Do you think that the citizens will donate to cover the city's portion of the, of the grant?
I think so. Uh, we, we are, on our Woodland Hills Outdoors website, we, we have, uh, within two weeks. We'll have online donations that people can make. I think some promotion and encouragement. We should be able to raise five thousand dollars.
Okay, that's, that's kind of my thought, too. So, yeah, I, I'm insubordinate.
Thank you, thank you, Greg. It sounds like you have the support of the council to do, to do the application. And maybe. Okay.
Yeah, keep, keep in touch on, on what, what your plan is to do with the money and, and that type of thing, so. You know, we, we talked maybe about trying to get a large Christmas tree type thing planted there in the front of the park. That could be decorated at Christmas time and that type of thing.
Very good, great, thank you. All right, next are, are updates. So, uh, Doral, CWPP.
I have no updates.
Paul, Animal Shelter.
No updates.
Okay, Carrie, Utah Lake.
Uh, we have a special meeting, um, for the governing board planned for next week.
Okay, great. Um, Bob, uh, Central Utah nine-one-one and Solid Waste District.
Um, Central nine-one-one canceled their meeting and Solid Waste. They're moving forward and making great strides. Hopefully in twenty-four to thirty-six months. We'll have a new transfer, uh, waste transfers facility.
Great, okay. Um, SESD, I talked to you last time about the fact that they're talking about re-districting. And possibly redoing the way the, um, the two appointed board seats are made. They decided at the last, um, our last meeting that. Um, that's going to be tabled until after, um, they're doing a rate feasibility study to make well. Uh, facilities kind of study, just to study all the SESD. Equipment, facilities, that sort of thing, and what needs to happen in the future. And, you know, what the rates need to be, and they're gonna do all that. And where the growth is gonna be, they're gonna do all that before they talk about re-districting again, so that when they re-district, it'll be looking toward the future. And not just what the present is. So that's not on the table. If, um, we still do need to have a discussion about. If they decide to go to fully elected seats instead of appointed seats, how we would for, see that best serving in our community. So, um, right now, the, my sentiment is that. That we should, if we need to have elected board positions instead of have it be appointed. Then we should still, the district should still be wholly in our city boundaries. So whoever represents districts with Woodland Hills would only represent Woodland Hills citizens, so. That, but that's kind of how I feel right now. If, if you guys have other thoughts, we can talk about that, but not tonight. I'm just, talk to me offline and we'll, because that's, it's gonna be months and months coming before anything changes there. Also, the, you know, we've had this ongoing lawsuit with the, uh, three cities about annexations. And we're actually making, I think, real progress toward a settlement. Uh, the, all the attorneys seem to be very positive and hopeful and excited. And I talked to the, uh, Mayor Leeson of Spanish Fort the other day, and he felt like the last meeting they had went really well. So I'm hoping that, um, that that will be resolved soon. That is good news. Is, are there any other, um, items that you would like to talk, discuss before we close our work session?
Just be aware, the fire department is meeting with the finance committee tomorrow night. And we will be interested in talking. Uh, with the council in a soon budget planning session, right, Mayor? Maybe that might be in March. I don't know, but. We're just looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you, Doral. Thanks for doing that. And yeah, um, thanks, Dave, for getting that meeting up and going tomorrow. Yes, Carrie?
I would like maybe by next meeting to pick that date for our budget retreat, so that we all have it in advance. Our, our schedules are cleared, so just next, our next meeting, come prepared to pick a date.
Okay, I'm put that on my list right now. Okay, great. Um, let me give you, let's see, I have that it is, sorry, I have two pair of glasses going. At nine fifty-one, let me just give you till nine fifty-five and we'll start our meeting. This is probably way out of line, but. I just got this finished tonight. It's a little late, but it's done.
Wow. That's cool.
Let's see.
Merry Christmas.
I'm a little late, but eventually I got it done.
Mayor, you're really, really early.
I'm planning ahead.
Yeah, this is Christmas twenty twenty-one. Think about Christmas twenty twenty anyway.
Well, my kids, I'm calling it twenty twenty, the year that, what, the year that never was. Okay, let's see.
You know, just think twenty-one years ago, we were all worried about Y two K. That was a long time ago.
Yes, we were.
And it ended up being nothing. We had twenty-one more years to prepare for the trauma. For twenty more years. All right, let's see.
Well, the programs I wrote in twenty fifty are gonna revert back to nineteen again, so.
All right, it is nine fifty-five. Let's get started. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone to the city council meeting for the city of Woodland Hills. It is, um, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. We're so thrilled to be in a new year. Um, it is nine fifty-five, late at night, and we appreciate everybody that is here. Uh, I've asked, uh, Councilmember MacArthur to lead us in the pledge. And, uh, Councilmember Kinnison, if you'd be willing to offer an invocation. So let us, um, let us get to those things, please. I would like to remind everybody, please mute themselves for the, those two items.
And, and Bob, would you please, uh, show the colors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will offer the prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this evening for living in this community. And associating one with another and with our citizens. We are grateful for the people we live around and for their interest in making this community even greater. We are grateful for our mayor and for the time she spends, and we pray a blessing on her. To continue with the energy to do this task that she has volunteered. We are grateful for all of the people that serve with us and help make this city better. Help us this evening to make good decisions, to communicate well and to understand each other's opinions. And, and help to always serve the citizens of our community the best way that we can. We ask these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right, thank you, Doral, and thank you, Paul. All right, Jody, do we have public comment?
If I can have anyone who's interested in making public comment, to please raise their hand at this time.
Jody, I'm not smart enough to raise my hand, but I, Mayor, I don't know that I need to state again what we were talking about with the, uh, just with the check coming to us. Jody, I mean, you tell me, so. I'm glad to do it, but.
What you got before that you do not want us to send the check at this time and you'd like to review the. Reimbursement that was put together by LEI Engineering.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, all right. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and that is the minutes from November tenth, which Jody has sent out. Um, then the, the check we all heard is gonna be, um, tabled until more information is received. The approval of the employee job descriptions for the city recorder and fire chief and zoning enforcement officer, those were sent out. Uh, last month, just before the meeting. And then the approval of the twenty September financials and check disbursements.
Do, do we vote on all of these at one, or do we do them separately?
We can do it all at once. We can pull them apart if we need to, but we can vote them as, we can just approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Ottley and a second from MacArthur. Any further discussion or questions on that?
Mayor, I think you need to do that other than item two.
Yes, thank you. Bob, are you willing to amend that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and Paul, are you willing to accept the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve, for pointing that out. All right. All in favor, Kinniston?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
Malkovich?
Yes.
Ottley?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the consent agenda is approved. The first item on the business and discussion is the. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one, which is a change in zoning for one eighty-five West Lakeview Way.
So one of us will, will motion and the other will second.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve that rezoning.
Yes.
From Malkovich and a second from Pratt. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, Pratt?
Yes.
Ottley?
Yes.
Malkovich?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
Kinniston?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance is passed.
Thank you, by the way.
The second is the, um, ordinance creating a new city zone. And, um, I think we decided that we are going to table that for at least a couple more weeks. And while we, um, consider some of the ramifications and what. A little more fully what the planning commission's already done and what options that we really have.
I would like to propose that we, uh, send it back to the, uh, planning commission and ask them to, uh, lead this, uh, small group. And then report back on their findings.
I second his suggestion.
Okay, well, let's ask, let's ask Wayne.
You want the same answer that you got before? No, I'm just kidding. I. No, I'm just kidding. I, we won't be able to get to it for a couple of weeks, likely. But if that's.
The whole planning commission or just maybe one or two members of the planning commission or you and the group? I mean, does it have to be an official meeting of the planning commission? Is that what you're asking, Bob?
Good, good point. I was just thinking that they, that the planning commission ought to oversee what the small group has to say and then based upon that, make the, the recommendations.
Well, Bob, you, I, we can do that, but we've already done it. And you don't, you don't agree with what we did. I would really prefer if, if, if someone else wants to lead with that and go into this group of people and talk to them, I don't have any objection to that at all. It's certainly your discretion to do it, but.
Well, I'm, I'm one of the citizens, so I don't know that I should lead it. I think it should be somebody that's somewhat impartial.
Well, I'm not sure you're looking at me as being impartial.
Me either.
Dave, you're the one that suggested a small citizen committee. Do you have a sentiment on how you think would be best to move forward with this?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think.
Do we ask Lori to be in charge?
I think Greg, Nanette. Oh goodness, why is my brain not working?
John?
Huh? Are you thinking of John?
John or the Isits?
I was thinking of the Isits. And, and John would be fine. I think that, I think that would be a really good group from up there. And then maybe somebody, I don't know, maybe Jeremy or, you know, somebody who, who knows. I wouldn't throw Lori into the deep end.
I know, I'm kidding. What about Aaron Lowe also?
Oh, yeah, that would be fine. So, so again, I hope that what does not come out of this group is a complete rewrite of what the planning commission has done. That would not be, I would not be in favor of that. What I would be in favor of is basically having them go, okay, we're 99% of the way there, but we need to have these additional three or four things that will just help us feel like that is still protected. I think, you know, that, that's at least how I envision it.
Me too.
Why don't you put one of them in charge of having their own, own group up there? That way it's, whatever their decision is, is not filtered. Even make it in writing, put it back in writing. So that there's a clear understanding of what they're, what they want out of it. Well, there's one additional step that I feel like this group needs to do so that it doesn't become a tussle between the city and this group. They actually need to talk to somebody who actually does know zoning and make sure that whatever they're proposing is actually legal. Because, you know, you, you can always come up with pie in the sky ideas. And then when the rubber meets the road or when the laws, you know, when we meet the laws, they don't actually work. And so I don't want this group to just come up with pie in the sky ideas. I want them to actually vet the idea and make sure that it's actually something that can be done.
Well, we can give them Meg Ryan's contact info, or they can give us what they are interested in doing and we can contact Meg and run it by her.
So with that in mind, what if we list that group of people and maybe have John or Nanette be the lead?
And then include Greg and somebody else if they can. I, I mean, I don't know if Aaron would be willing to do it, but I think he'd be a great voice.
He's online, we can ask him.
I'm here. I'm just telling my wife, guess what I just got volunteered to do?
Well, that's why I'm saying, I don't know you, we're, we're really putting you on the spot, so.
As long as I get a pardon for violating the no trespassing signs and sledding up there.
I don't know anything about what you're talking about.
Aaron, payback. And John, we can ask him. I don't know if, is Nanette still on?
No, no, she's not, but I'm in.
Would you be willing to lead this group?
I'm here, I can talk to Nanette. I think she'd be okay with it.
Would you be willing to lead the group?
Me personally?
No, John.
John, John, yeah. Sure.
Alright, John, we turn over to you. And if you have any questions or problems, get in, get in touch with me. And we'll get you, we'll like to get in touch with Meg Ryan up at the league about land use requirements and restrictions on zoning and things.
So as you guys pass this, do you want to give us a deadline so we're?
Well, I, we'd really like to consider it at our next meeting, which is on the 26th. So if you can have, if you can get it done by like the 22nd, so we can get the information out and talk with the planning commission. And if not, I mean, you can take the time you need, but let's start with that goal. If we miss it.
And I will, I will definitely involve you, Wayne, in some conversation behind the scene, okay?
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, John. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Greg. Okay. The next thing is the decision to sell or lease the abandoned water line. And I think Corbett.
Pardon?
There's other water line in town besides what we talked about down Woodland Hills Drive. But I've got a contract if we're willing to sign it. And so I'm assuming we have to go into closed session for that.
Okay. And so then we don't have anything to discuss on that. Okay, resolution appointing Lori Thomas to the planning commission.
I move that we approve it.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Ottley and a second from Pratt. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, Kinnison?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
Malkovich?
Yes.
Ottley?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Motion passes and carries. Thank you, Lori. We're thrilled to have you. And thanks Wayne for getting this all lined up. Okay, the resolution appointing the people to Parks and Trails is tabled until next meeting. Approval to apply for the mini grant. I don't, I don't think we need a any formal council action on that. I think as long as Greg feels like the council's okay with it, he can go ahead and work on that.
Well, wouldn't we need to have an approval if they had a matching part of the grant? So do these mini grants, Greg? I, I, I know most of them have, have a matching and we would need to approve that if that was the case.
Yeah, yes, it's a 50/50 match. And, and I think the, the cash portion would come from Woodland Hills Outdoors and donor donations. But we would, over the next three months, we would, we would seek donations for, for that matching portion.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so Corbett has requested a closed session so we can discuss a, a potential sale of city assets.
I'm moving, we're going to closed session.
Alright, I have a motion and a, a motion from MacArthur and who seconded, sorry, was that you, Bob?
Yes.
Ma'am. Okay, second from Ottley. All in favor, Pratt?
Yes.
Ottley?
Yes.
Malkovich?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
Kinnison?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into closed session. Jody, will you let us know when we're ready for it?
Well, and don't we have to ask if anybody wants to come back on after we're done so that she can notify them?
It's been long enough already.
We're all asleep, Carrie.
I learned in the open meetings training that I listened to since our last meeting that we can come back into, into open session, but if all of you just leave, then the meeting gets adjourned due to lack of a quorum. So technically, we don't have to come back into session if nobody's here to do business, so.
So the lead button means something.
David, I'm just gonna stay on just for fun.
I'm willing to hang out. Looking for punishment.
Good, good night.
Yeah, good night, Steve.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen, bye.
Bye. Those who are wanting to, if we go back into a open session, there's no guarantee we will. Just shoot me a quick text message or an email and I will let you know if we've gone back into an open session or if we are not.
Otherwise, if you have not exited out of this meeting, I will have to exit you.
Everybody's gone now.
There we go. Let me stop this recording.
See ya.
It looks like we do not have a quorum, so the meeting's going to be closed at 10:35 PM.
Alright, thank you, Corbett.
He's already off. Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Jody.